Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, March 12th, 2018. I'd ask everyone that attends to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] Well, and after that National Anthem and in our attire tonight, I feel like saying, "Go Storm Go!" Let's start off the game. Okay. Um, uh, thanks very much to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to a former member of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I would note that council is dressed the way we are because we love our Grand Prairie Storm and they have the Series One deciding game at Revolution Place, 7:30 on Wednesday night. So absolutely, "Go Storm Go!" And glad to see council showing their, uh, their Storm pride. Uh, so we'll start with the adoption of previous council meeting minutes, and I think we've got a couple sets of those. Counsel, can I have an adoption for the February 12th minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Given, "Go Storm Go!" I'd like to make a motion that council approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held Thursday, March 1st, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we have a second set of minutes. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Given, "Go Storm Go!" I'd like to make a motion that council approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held Thursday, March 1st, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting. Uh, we have a nice full agenda this evening, and we have, uh, a couple of delegations, uh, that let us know ahead of time that they'd be appearing. Uh, and so we're gonna start with the Downtown Association, and I see one relatively familiar face who is somewhat related to the Downtown Association.
Mayor Given, I just, uh, wanna check the date for our March, uh, first meeting that I meant motion for. It should be March 5th.
Okay, thanks very much. That's why we ask. Uh, thanks very much for catching that. And, uh, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor O'Toole just spoke. Now I'll recognize Mrs. Rice.
I'm here this evening. Uh, you're later in your agenda. You have the Downtown Association 2018 budget, uh, for approval. And I'm here basically to answer any questions you may have. I reassure you that, first of all, this is the first time I've ever done this. I've always had to leave the room, so this is a new experience for me. Um, it is a zero increase budget. Uh, and there is absolutely not one penny of city money in this budget. Um, the Downtown Association is formed under bylaw C-801, um, as directed by the Municipal Government Act. And it is, in my opinion, a very strange situation. Uh, and the other areas similar to ours petitioned hard in the change of the Municipal Government Act, but to no avail. All they got changed instead of business revitalization zones, they became business improvement areas, and you'll be getting a bylaw amendment through. But, uh, this budget was approved by our membership at our AGM February 28th, which means nothing because you have to approve it, even though there is no city money in it. The same as our Board of Directors was elected at that meeting, which doesn't mean anything until you approve them at some point in the next few weeks. Uh, the, as I said, no city money in the budget. Um, and the association does pay the city roughly $28,000 a year, uh, for this account. So, any questions? I would be happy to answer them. I see you have a big, long agenda, so I won't go on and on.
Thanks very much, Ms. Rice. Uh, it is a bit odd to have you there because I was, it's hard for me to say Ms. Rice rather than Counselor Rice. Um, but are there any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody in the queue, so it looks like you answered them all. Um, and I just wanna clarify, are we dealing with the budget here this evening, or is it? Okay. I think it's at Corporate Services for tomorrow, isn't it? Yeah, okay. That's what I, I knew I'd seen it. Uh, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So council, we've had the presentation, and I don't see any questions for you. Thanks very much, Helen, for being here this evening. It's good to see you, uh, on that side of the table. That was our first delegation that let us know ahead of time that they were coming. Uh, our second delegation is with respect to liquor stores, Mr. Cho. Andrew, are you here? I think I saw you come in. Come on in, Mr. Cho. Um, and if you'd come forward, and while you're doing that, I'll just, uh, 'cause I know we'll have some other presenters this evening, uh, I would ask that everybody that comes forward, if you haven't already let us know ahead of time, if you just sort of state your name and, uh, what you're here to speak to. And typically, we ask delegations to restrain their comments to about five minutes. Um, and maybe we'll discuss that a little bit more details as we get on to our, our hens issue. Mr. Cho.
Hi, uh, my name's Andrew. Uh, my first, um, brought this, um, this issue to the city last year in April, but I believe it got dismissed without any further notification to, to myself or to my, um, um, to my friends that brought this to you last year. Um, since there is, since there are new couns, counselors this year, I thought I should bring this up again and let you know how the saturation of liquor stores are really affect, how they are affecting the local business owners in Grand Prairie who actually live here and raise their families.
Please, so are there some further details that you wanna share with council?
Uh, the, one thing that we're really concerned about is, um, last year I mainly focused on the sole saturation of liquor stores, but I would like to focus how they are affecting local business owners here in town by mostly, um, franchise liquor stores that are run by, uh, managers and, 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 and owners remotely from out of the province, um, locations or, or down south, who have nothing to do with the city and make no contributions to the city whatsoever. Um, and it's really affecting how we make a living here in town where we have committed to raise, raise our families and actually participate in the developments and the growth of the city. So I would like to see, um, some kind of a law that's going to regulate how these franchise, in particular, the franchise liquor stores are licensed and, 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 and allowed to, to service the city.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Cho. Uh, any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in at this time. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you for being here tonight. And do you have any solutions to this cludrum we have?
Yes. Um, I believe it was, um, Helen Rice that came up with a solution last year as to perhaps make liquor store, um, premises, potential premises discretionary. Um, for example, if you, as opposed to just going through AGLC who has nothing to do with our city or with cities in general, um, have the city issue, um, permits to open liquor stores.
Okay, Counselor O'Toole?
I, I've talked to AGLC several times, and they have nothing to do with rejecting applications. It's, um, i-if they can work with the city to, to, to come up with regulations, um, they're more than happy to.
Okay. I see Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cho, for being here today and presenting your concern. Being a new counselor, um, I don't know any of the details that you might have brought forth before. Uh, is there a, a ratio of locally owned versus franchises? Uh, any other information that would be pertinent that would make me want to look more closely at this?
I had a lot of, um, um, details last year that I presented to, to, to the council last year. Um, a lot of these liquor stores are, are densely located, um, and closely together. Uh, one of the examples are Parkside Liquor Store and Jimmy's Liquor Stores are only 83 meters apart. Um, and another big concern, well, one of the things that I, that I, a, a piece of information that I gathered from speaking to, um, sales representatives from different breweries and stuff, is that Solo Liquor, um, there are three, uh, there are two locations here in town of, uh, city of Grand Prairie, whereas there's only one in Fort McMurray, although the population in Fort McMurray is slightly larger than, than our population here. So, um, that's one example. Um, we have 48 liquor stores here in town from, from what I can, um, gather, um, as opposed to 23 in Fort McMurray. That's another example of saturation of liquor stores.
Okay, Counselor Blackburn?
I, I guess the question is, if your concern is about franchises versus local ownership, do you have a comparison of numbers of how many of each there are?
Um, the majority, I, I don't, but, but the majority of the liquor stores here in town are franchise liquor stores. Um, number one being is of course Liquor Depots and Liquor Barns. And, um, Solo is another, Solo Liquor Stores another franchise liquor stores that, that are, that's looking to expand here in town. From what I, from what I know, there will be a third location here pretty soon and a fourth at the end of the, at the end of the year.
Thank you.
And there's another one that's, um, ready to open is Olympia. Olympia Liquor Store in the, um, right across from GPRC. And these are all threats to your local business owners who are your, uh, residents, the actual residents who live here and, and whom you should really try to protect. You know, how Rachel Lottley is trying to protect the, the people of Alberta. I mean, that's what you really closely look at. We're the ones that are suffering.
Okay, I see Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, uh, thank you for coming tonight. A question for you. You refer to liquor stores as franchises and locally owned. Are they actual franchises or are they corporate stores? Because there's many local business owners in Grand Prairie that own franchises, and I would consider them local business owners as well, regardless that it's not other own businesses.
Can you clarify franchise?
So a franchise is typically something that you pay a franchise fee to a corporate organization?
Yes.
Are these stores you're referring to as cut, uh, competition to the independent local business owner?
Yes.
Are they actual franchises or are they corporate stores?
To independent local business owners.
Right, but you keep referring them to them as franchises. Are they actual franchises?
Oh, yeah, they're actual franchises.
So they're owned by local business people?
No, they're not.
So then they're corporate stores. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Counselor Clayton, I don't see anybody else in the queue, council. Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks very much, Ms. Cho. Thank you for raising the issue. Um, council deals with our, um, delegation business towards the end of the agenda, uh, and so, um, you can either watch the council video online, uh, or, uh, call in to find out what happened, or, um, it's likely the media would report on it. Uh, or you're welcome to stay. It looks like we might have an exciting meeting. You might wanna stick around and find out.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, so from there, we have a number of other, uh, people, I imagine, who will want to present to council related to some issues on our agenda. Um, if you're here for a public hearing, uh, which we have, um, one, I would, uh, ask that you, um, wait until the public hearing comes forward. If you're here about anything other, namely, uh, hens, uh, I owe, this is gonna be the time to speak to that. Um, we had one delegation that did let us know ahead of time that, uh, she wished to present. Uh, I'll invite her to come first. Um, but I will ask everybody, um, we have a large, uh, audience this evening, and I wanna ensure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard on the issue. Uh, at the same time, uh, we need to be respectful and make sure that everybody has enough time to speak. Um, and if we start to get repetitive, I might, uh, raise that and ask people if they, uh, have anything additional to add that hasn't already been said, just so that we don't end up going over the same ground. Okay, is that, is that fair? Okay, then the first, uh, delegation that let us know ahead of time that she wished to attend was, uh, Ms. Schneider. Uh, Susan, are you here if you'd like to come forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Ms. Schneider. Maybe you can just, uh, pull that up a little bit closer. They're relatively sensitive, but they do have to be aimed towards you a little bit, as our council members often find out. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak. I understand tonight is a reading for the Urban Hens Livestock Exemption, and I'd like to speak to you before you vote. Urban hens have made a very thorough and very passionate plea requesting approval of backyard chickens. They outline how wonderful chickens would be, especially with proper education. However, there are some negative aspects that I'd like to share with you. The backyard chicken trend became, has become popular enough for some cities to revise their current animal bylaws. Chickens are considered livestock, and in the 1970s, livestock were outlawed in the city of GP. If we allow chickens, we open the gates for other farm animals, such as geese, pigs, and goats. In fact, Mr. Chris Manuel has stated in his report that bylaw has already had. Many people inquire about this. Despite urban hens claim that many cities allow backyard hens, there are still many, many cities that do not. Toronto, Ottawa, Calgary, Halifax, Regina, Saskatoon, Medicinehat, and Lethbridge, and even in the urban areas in the county of GP, they're not allowed. So let's pretend it's June, the snow is gone. We'll step outside on my deck. Urban hens have presented that the noise volume created by chickens is about conversational volume, but my experience is that they're much louder and the noise is continuous. Chickens squabble all day long, and there's plenty of cackling. On a farm, the coop is away from the house, but I feel that residential lots are not loud enough, not large enough, to contain the noise from chickens. No. So, I can't enjoy my backyard because I have chickens next door, so we'll go inside and talk with my windows closed. In fact, our noise bylaw specifies that noise needs to be away from sleeping facilities, but the Urban Hen Guidelines state a coop can be three meters away from a house. Three meters. I would hate to be trying to sleep during the summer with my windows open with chickens next door. I'm sure there's been many, I know there's been many about, many items about this, so I'll be very brief. There's droppings of chickens. They're not the same as cats and dogs. There's a difference. Chicken, chicken droppings smell what much worse. They poop off and everywhere and attract flies. Chickens get lice. They create a lot of dust by scratching around. It has been stated previously, if we allow dogs and cats, we should also allow chickens. But chickens cannot be trained to obey, nor can they be brought into the house when they're noisy. Backyard hens are especially vulnerable to predation. They will attract more wild animals into the city more than we already have. Urban Hen Guidelines state that there would be neighborhood notification process. Does this mean potential hen owners would need to notify their neighbors only, or do they need 100% consent from their neighbors? I would never consent to chicken next door, so does that mean they would or would not allow them next to me? It's kind of not very clear. This also brings up the issue that one property, one on each side and three across, across the back, potentially you could have 20 chickens surrounding your backyard. In conclusion, I feel that backyard, that the backyard chicken issue is not about wanting fresh, fresh eggs or knowing where your food is coming from, since people can buy fresh eggs year-round from the farmer's market or from a local poultry farm. I feel this issue is more about protecting property rights from noise, smell, and lowered property values from chickens over the fence. Backyard chicken creeps will be just another thing for neighbors to feud about, and bylaw enforcement will be stretched even thinner. Last August, the previous council rejected the Urban Hens plea to allow backyard chickens. I would, I was there, and I would allow current council to deny this plea as well, to keep chickens out of our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Schneider. Uh, did you time that? Because you had it down to five minutes and 12 seconds. That's pretty good.
And you, you didn't cut me off?
Well, no, I've been known to show a little bit of latitude, but that, that's pretty good. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions for the delegation? I don't see any questions for the delegation. It looks like you made your point quite clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to come forward, and maybe at this point, we'll keep the topic to being the backyard hens. Sure. Come on, come forward, Ms. Curlo. Just introduce yourself with a microphone for a recording secretary.
My name is Paulette Curlo, and I am here to speak against the Urban Hens Livestock Exemption permits for the city of Grand Prairie. In third world countries, when people are taught how to improve their standard of living and prevent disease, one of the first things taught is to put a fence around the home to prevent animals and livestock from roaming near living quarters. Unfortunately, there has recently been a fashionable and romantic trend in building, um, building up in some North American cities. The trend is that having chickens kept in the backyard is somehow modern, cute, and cuddly, and this is clearly not the case. Chicken coops are dirty, they attract flies, and need to be faithfully cleaned to keep down the smell and to remove droppings. Farmers don't keep chickens close to the house, so we, so we city dwellers must look to be lacking in common sense to want to do so. Chickens attract predators like foxes, coyotes, stray dogs, and feral cats who can carry rabies. This puts small pets, children, and adults in danger of being attacked, a very real danger to pets and humans. If improperly sealed, chicken feed attracts disease transmitting vermin like mice and rats. Chickens are domesticated birds and can carry bird flu, which is a viral disease which can be transmitted to humans. As reported in the Daily Herald Tribune, chicken clucking reaches the decibel levels of a barking dog. In a city that already is too noisy with increased traffic, emergency vehicles, sirens, and train horns blaring, extra noise needs to be avoided. Um, and however, clucking backyard chickens are unavoidable because they are back there and they are perhaps in your neighbor's backyard. As is the case with all rules, the majority follow them, but some don't, and that causes major disruption. It opens the door to abuse of the bylaw, which opens the door to cause wider neighborhood problems. It causes neighbors to report on neighbors, and then bylaw enforcement has to get involved, which means an increased workload and accompanying cost. It is a poor use of tax dollars for the benefit of a few, and the benefits are questionable. Chickens are meant to be free roaming, and to keep them in a coop is abuse. If the birds are allowed to roam around the backyard, then there is, there's chicken poop everywhere with the odors wafting through the neighborhood and creating a potential disease situation. Do you want to live next door to that? Do you want your children or your grandchildren living next door to that? I don't. Freshly laid eggs plucked from beneath a warm sitting clucking hen for breakfast? A romantic notion indeed for some, however, the costs to the taxpayer are too high, when all that is gained is freshly laid eggs for a few. This city has many providers of organic free-range eggs, and when one supports the businesses that provide these eggs, then a benefit is had for all. Businesses thrive, people have jobs, uh, and the city collects, excuse me, collects its taxes. And don't be fooled by the enchanting idea of free eggs. Build the coop, buy the feed, pay the vet, count the hours spent maintaining the coop and administering care, compensate the neighbor's child for feeding the hens and cleaning the coop when you go away for the weekend, and then it all adds up. The results, as one backyard farmer from Merced, California told an online chicken forum, "Don't tell my wife, but I think my eggs are costing about $40 a dozen." There was a time in the history of Grand Prairie that livestock was permitted to be kept within the limits of the town and now the city. That changed when people recognized that the departments suffered, or sorry, that the detriments suffered by the majority far outweighed any benefit held by the minority of city dwellers. The primary reasons for that change were issues of sanitation, health, and safety. People who lived here before us tried the experiment and wisely ruled against having livestock in the city. Let us respect this example. Urban chicken coops are not modern, cute, or cuddly. Urban chicken coops are dirty and have disadvantages for urban dwellers. No matter how innovative the design, urban chicken coops have been tried in this city and wisely, and wisely rejected. If people really want to have chicken coops, perhaps they should move out into the country and have a chicken coop where chicken coops belong. In conclusion, chickens are livestock and belong on a farm in rural chicken coops. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Ms. Curlo. Uh, any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. Okay, thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, I'd ask anyone else that wishes to come forward to speak on this issue? Anyone else that wishes to come forward to speak to the Urban Hen bylaw? Sure, come on up. Don't all rush, rush the microphone at once. Welcome. So you've seen the process. Please introduce yourselves for a recording secretary, and welcome. Just make sure that you've each got a microphone sort of pointing at you there.
Hi, my name's Alan Tibbles, and I'm here to speak in favor of Urban Hens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rebecca Keys, and I'm here to speak in favor of Urban Hens. To begin, um, I've prepared a, we've prepared a quick presentation for you, and I'd like to, uh, have all the members of Grand Prairie Urban Hens and hen supporters in the background behind us, uh, give us a wave.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I put the paper here, right, if I want it to go up on the monitor? Okay. So as some of the previous speakers have mentioned, yes, in the 1970s, there was this theme across North America to gentrify cities. It was fashionable and cool to move food production out of cities, to make factory farms, and outsource our food. There's a dedicated group of ci-residents within the city of Grand Prairie that would like to try to prove that having hens within the city is not a detriment to our city, as has been proved within other jurisdictions, including Toronto and Three Ward. This past Saturday, we hosted Grand Prairie, or we hosted Backyard Hens 101, which was an educational class, um, put on with guest instructor Dr. Frank Robinson from the University of Alberta.
I'll move this here. Have to turn that.
Other way. All right. Um, you'll see before you a list of some of the, of course, topics. Alan, do you wanna speak to any of these?
Sure. Um, Dr. Robinson has been teaching, uh, chicken anatomy and chicken genetics and breeding at the U of A for, for 31 years. 42 times, 42 semesters he's taught this, and he came and taught us essentially out of his own goodwill, just because he
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I put the paper here, right? If I want it to go up on the monitor? Okay. Though as some of the previous speakers have mentioned, yes, in the 1970s, there was this theme across North America to gentrify cities. It was fashionable and cool to move food production out of cities, to make factory farms and outsource our food. There's a dedicated group of residents within the city of Grand Prairie that would like to try to prove that having hens within the city is not a detriment to our city, as has been proved within other jurisdictions, including Toronto and Three Ward's. This past Saturday, we hosted Grand Prairie, we hosted Backyard Hens 101, which was an educational class put on with guest instructor Dr. Frank Robinson from the University of Alberta.
Have to turn that.
Can, other way. All right, you'll see before you a list of some of the course topics. Alan, do you want to speak to any of these?
Sure. Dr. Robinson has been teaching chicken anatomy and chicken genetics and breeding at the U of A for, for 31 years, 42 times, 42 semesters he's taught this and he came and taught us essentially out of his own goodwill, just because he cares so much about this program and he believes in it. And I learned more from him in four hours of education on urban hens than I've ever learned in any of my college courses before. It was a profoundly interesting course and the amount of work that goes into keeping hens, especially in an urban environment, is intimidating enough so that it'll probably scare off quite a few people just knowing what they, what they have to do to keep them. As far as biosecurity and health, those two things are, are very strictly regulated in our, in our plans by our group and as part of that education course. And like I say, it was very thorough, very thorough and well worth it. Clyde was there and it was, it was great to see him and, and couldn't have gone better as far as I'm concerned.
As a farm girl, I, who's raised chickens in the past, I learned an awful lot about hens that I didn't know. And I think that everyone should have to have a very thorough course and proper education and proper guidelines to govern this activity for the health of the birds and our community. So onto some of the concerns that were listed previously.
So as far as talking to people and following on social media, there have been three main kind of points that people talk about when they're concerned about hens, noise, smell and pests. There's a fourth one that kind of involves bylaw and enforcement, but that's kind of ever present and not necessarily true. But as far as noise goes, we've got a bar graph here that shows the loudest occurrence of noise from a hen, which is when they're laying eggs and that's about 60 decibels, which is conversation volume, like, you know, about what you're hearing now. Vacuuming is considerably higher. Normal dog barking is about 90 decibels, a double volume of, of hen clucking or more. As far as smell goes, a hen, an individual hen generates about 0.4 ounces of waste per day as compared to an 80 pound dog, which generates 16 ounces, so.
Sorry, one ounce per day.
One ounce? Sorry. Okay, so a large, a large dog, an 80 pound dog generates about 16 ounces, about a pound per day. So there's a considerable difference in volume between the two types of pets that we allow. Essentially like that's what we're talking about, it's a small, small group of animals. It's not a farm. So those two things are really out of proportion as concerns. The pest concern is addressed as part of our course. We talk about how to store food and that carries through to any kind of waste, like any kind of bird food or anything that people have and are allowed to have on their property. Storage is important. We talk about that in the course, how to store things and, and how to keep them, oh, keep the pests out of them. Chickens, any kind of pets will attract predators if they are available for predation. Cats will be eaten by coyotes, small dogs will be eaten by hawks and coyotes and owls. We, in our proposal, have very strict guidelines for coop construction and those coops do not allow for any kind of predators to have access. Excuse me, not only that, but the yards have to be fenced in order for, in order for the person to keep hens. So it will be double, any hens we have will be double protected. No predators will have access to those hens. So without generating a food source, they will not increase predation.
I thought it'd be useful for council to see some comparisons to other Alberta municipalities. With St. Albert and Erdria are great examples of communities that are having pilot projects commencing this year. They're both allow, they're looking for 20 applicants for their pilot projects. They have them now and they'll be commencing this spring. Judging by the populations, that's just a good diagram for you, the ones that state are, are ones that currently allow urban henkeeping. Just to add to Alan's last slide or last comment about predators, there's been, there's been no correlation in Edmonton, look, tracking coyotes in the river valley and the placement of urban hen coops. No correlation in an increase of coyotes in an area or coyotes attacking coops or coming into yards. It's important to recognize that we don't police things like barbecues and that we don't make it difficult for people who don't take care of their cats and let them wander around in, say, in Bear Creek. And those animals do attract and those barbecues do attract pests and predators into our neighborhoods and into our communities. So if we're going to say that hens are going to attract them, well, then we start, should start regulating barbecues as well because an improperly kept barbecue is a great source of predator attraction. So after Saturday's course, we surveyed people who took the course for the members that lived within the city of Grand Prairie. We have 13 sites that are, meet the education requirement, have the correct yard size and that it's completely enclosed, that have already spoken to their neighbors and have consent. Consent, not neighbor notification. They went and talked to their neighbors and most of us have it in text message form from our neighbors that they have consent. And we've asked that any urban hen members register with the Alberta government as a prerequisite of keeping hens should such an activity be permitted within the city of Grand Prairie. Do you want to add anything to that?
Just Mr. Tibbles, I'll give you guys a heads up that you've got about a minute left.
So just on further partnerships, our current partnerships are with the following. And should this be an activity that the city of Grand Prairie allows as in a pilot form? We have already planned for further educational opportunities for the public, but also for our members so that we can continue with that education. That's, that's all I had.
Okay, I have just a couple of things to talk about in terms of, of comparison between these pets and other pets that we allow in town. We allow dogs and cats. Dogs are predators, they're loud, they generate lots of waste and it's unusable. They're a threat to people if they're loose. They're a threat to other animals if they're loose, they're fast, they don't produce anything or really control any problems. Cats are legal, they're also predators, they're domestic cats. According to the Global Invasive Species Database, kill 1.3 to 4 billion birds and 6.3 to 22.3 billion mammals annually. They've been listed among the 100 worst non-native invasive species in the world. They're also responsible for at least 14% of global bird, mammal and reptile extinctions and are the principal threat to almost 8% of critically endangered birds, mammals and reptiles on the planet. Urban hens are not legal, they're quiet, they're less than 60 decibels, they lay eggs, they eat mice, insects and mollusks. Their waste is compostable and healthy. They're an important part of education as far as food sources and animal husbandry go. They're slow, they're friendly, they generate much less waste than dogs, they aren't a threat to people, they don't attract pests unless they're dirty and uncared for and they don't attract predators unless they're identified as a food source.
Thank you very much to both you for your presentation. I'll just ask if there's any questions for the delegation? Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. Okay, thank you both very much. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else that came tonight intending to speak that feels that their view hasn't been heard? Yep, please come forward. We do allow one opportunity per delegation. Sure, come forward and introduce yourself, sir.
Good evening, Council. I'm Chris Arkand. As an occupation, I'm a health and safety coordinator, so I thought this topic would be pretty good. I first heard about the urban hen movement, if you want to call it, as of, well, last year, I was at the council meeting. And I'm here to speak against urban hens. One of the things that have been brought up and why I'm against it is we can go back and forth between where does it end? Like, you know, like if the pilot project, I heard something about four hens for people that are coming towards this, but where does that end? Does that go, will that slowly increase to eight? Double from there, go to 16, 32, you like, you know, it's, it's a, it's an urban area. I grew up in the county, I grew up around farms, I've dealt with this, chickens do, or hens in this case, they do bring predators. And yes, dogs and cats, if you want to call it, are predators. However, it does attract bigger animals such as coyotes and, and cougars, which, once again, if you think of risk, that's higher risk than I think, you know, like even German shepherd or even a tabby cat, you know? But where does this end that? Just the chicken, just the chicken jumpstart, if you want to call it, like, you know, like I've always wanted to own a cow in town, like that'd be kind of nice, you know, maybe one cow jumpstart. When, with the, there's a quote from the couple that were speaking before and they said, back in the seventies when they were, when bylaw came, where they moved all livestock, I guess, to the county rather than the city back in the seventies in the quote fashionable and cool. I think it's about the same thing now with people wanting in urban areas to have livestock now, such as urban hens. And even with, there was a quote there too I'd like to bring up, it was talking about how cats, I believe, kill like over, I think the number is like over a million or a billion, lots of birds anyways a year. And I was thinking, well, if you, if you want to put hand in hand on how many like birds even kill, I guess, you can, you can compare that even to wind turbines and solar farms in some aspect. But yeah, for me, my biggest concern and like I have lots of friends that have and family that do have chickens and hens and all that and they're totally against this. And yes, they do live on farms and they believe that's a safe spot for that, for chickens and hens to be. Yeah, I personally think it is kind of cruel to have hens in town just because I find that's almost cruel, they're free roaming animals and even if you do have them, keep them in a coop, even in like yards nowadays, as how's there being built, there's not much room for a coop even to be developed, even in older areas, like, yes, I understand that, you know, it's, I understand that there's more, even more space in the older areas such as like Hillside, Patterson, things like that. But once again, like myself and my spouse right now, we're going to be first time homeowners, being, moving into somebody that has a chicken coop, it's going to devalue our properties. So it, you got to weigh the pros and cons, whether or not, yes, there are pros to, you know, having your own food grown and all that. However, you know, there are cons, you got to think of your neighbors, you're devalue, devaluing their houses, having these coops and livestock because nobody's going to really want to move next to somebody that has some sort of livestock living next door. And yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Mr. Arkand. Any questions for the delegation? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in with any. Thanks very much, Chris. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else that wished to come forward and related to this topic? Is there, with a perspective that hasn't been shared? Anybody else that has a perspective or information that hasn't been shared? Sure, if you'd like to come forward.
Hi, my name is David Braun. I'm with the urban hens delegation. I spoke with you guys before on the previous council meetings. I'm one of the people that also attended the course this weekend with the doctor from the U of A. And I've also spoken with both my neighbors and I've spoken with a realtor in town too. There is no proof on devaluation of property as to having a urban hen coop next to it. There's been no evidence of that so far in other municipalities. Both my neighbors are actually quite excited. I believe this will open the communication between neighbors, which has been lacking in the past 10 to 20 years. You have eggs available, I mean, one egg per chicken per day is almost, is pretty much an average. It opens up the door to share and be more communicable with your neighbors as the same as with gardening and whatnot. The compost is very usable, the waste from the chickens is very usable when you compost it for a year. That's one of the things that we spoke about this weekend. Sorry. So I'd just like to speak on, on behalf of going ahead with the urban hens project. I believe our group with GPR and Hens has done a lot of the research and homework and we've provided a quite of a viable solution for this, for it to go ahead with council. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Braun. Just hold on a second, just in case council hasn't taken me up on the offer yet, but are there any questions for the delegation? Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in, would just like to make sure. Thanks very much, Mr. Braun, for being here. Is there anybody else that wished to come forward with a perspective that hasn't been shared so far? Sure. Absolutely, come forward and you've sort of seen that, I will just ask you to introduce yourself so that we can get your name on for the record.
I am, hello, I'm Cameron Braun and I'm for the GPR and Hens allegation. My perspective on this is it would help, well, kids my age learn what my guess responsibility is because a lot of them are always on social media, they don't know much about the outside world. And being, well, having a father comes, who comes from Saskatchewan, I've learned a lot about urban henkeeping. I would just think it would help bring the community together a bit more with.
All right, you're doing great.
Thanks, I, I just don't know what to say.
It's okay. It can be pretty intimidating once you get up here. You're doing good.
No. With kids my age, they're always on video games or something, I think it's important for them to learn what's around them, where eggs come from and how to raise livestock.
Thanks very much, thanks, Cameron. Any questions for the delegation? How is it that you guys are ringing in on poor Cameron? Okay, I've got two questions for you apparently. Counselor Thieson.
All right, thanks, Mayor Given. Hey, Cameron, so kids your age, I don't know for the thousands of people watching at home and for council around here, how old are you?
13.
13 years old. Now, my question for you is around the cruelty of keeping hens in coops. If, if this were to pass today and let's say you're one of the 10 lucky backyard coop owners, do you think it's a viable suggestion to say that hens may be cared for better when they're in your backyard and they're accessible to kids your age or younger? Maybe like a pet? Do you think you could pet a chicken like you could pet a cat or a dog?
My opinion on that is you, you could if it was docile. If you've got a calmer breed that wouldn't, that isn't as nervous around people as one that isn't.
No, that's, that's great. Do you think that they'd get, do you think that they'd get love as much or more love than they might get on a farm?
They might get more with the, with kids that are younger.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Bressi.
Well, Mr. Braun, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. I'm curious, were you part of the urban hens course this weekend?
Yes.
So what was something interesting to learn there?
I learned a lot more than I've learned in school, actually, because basically they don't teach us anything. I learned a lot. I learned about how to keep them safely, that they can eat almost anything. I didn't know that before and just a lot of really fun, cool stuff I was interested in.
Well, well, thank you. I've been doing this for a few months, I got a desk to hide behind and I'm still just kind of scared of the microphone, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Cameron, thanks very much for being here this evening. Sir, anybody else that wished to make a presentation with respect to this issue? Wait a minute. You look strangely familiar. What's your name?
Uh, my name is Scott Braun.
Okay.
I am for the Urban Hens Project.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. As my dad spoke about the composition of the manure for these animals, if you let it decompose for one year, it will be perfectly, um, it's perfectly usable, uh, fertilizer for your garden. And a lot of, a lot of homeowners around the community that I noticed growing up here in Grand Prairie love the garden. And what I find is the price of a new manure can vary from expensive to cheap, and that can also come with different qualities. Also, uh, this was also mentioned in the course that I did on Sat- in, on Saturday. Also, what I found, I'm on, I heard Counselor Thieson's question about if they will get the same amount of attention. Over the summer, I was in B.C. and our friend, our buddy had some chickens. And I noticed that no matter, no matter what kind of animal it is, you can still give it attention. I mean, even though these were not my pets, I still gave them as much attention as I could. Also with this, um, I was fond that I was interested in it because I was, I was curious about the chickens because I was interested in this concept. Because growing up, my grandparents live out in height and I'm, I was, I grew up around a lot of farmland and I sort of know the, uh, what do you call it, experience of response, big responsibilities when it comes to these sort of animals.
Thanks very much, Scott. Any questions for the delegation? It's like there aren't. Thanks very much. The, oh, Counselor Thieson.
Gotcha. Well, if you're gonna come into my house, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. Uh, this is, uh, this is just related to, uh, I guess, how much hard work and effort that the GP Urban Hens Group has, has put into this. I know when you guys first started, um, it was a lot of living room and dining room conversations. And I think I did a quick review of the first one. Uh, and you guys are really, really hyped and excited in your, at your kitchen table about everything that was coming forward. Are you still hyped and excited? Do you think, uh, you think all this hard work may, may be worth it for you in the end?
Well, yeah. Uh, first of all, when I was young, ever since I was a young kid, my dad taught me to work hard for what you want. And as well, I even, like, ever since, as long as I can remember, I've always wanted chickens. Just knowing that you can know where your food is coming from, you can, uh, you, you'll obtain it with your own hard work.
Great answer. Thanks so much, Scott. Thanks, Counselor Thieson. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Scott, thanks for being here this evening. Okay, so is there any perspectives, uh, that need to be shared this evening that haven't already been shared? So I'm sure you all want us to get to a point where we actually vote on this thing anyways, right? So, uh, so I don't see anybody else coming forward. Was there anybody else that wished to, uh, address council on any other community-related matter? Okay, I don't see anybody coming forward. And so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. I'll just make a reminder that, uh, this opportunity exists at every regular city council meeting for anyone to address council on any community-related matter. Uh, but we'll move on to public hearings. We'll start with item, uh, six point one, Bylaw C eleven eighty-six two, the Westgate Area Structure Plan Amendment, uh, Bylaw C thirteen seventy-three, Westgate East Outline Plan, and Bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighty-seven, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. I would look to Ms. Downing for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration has received applications to redesignate the subject property from high-density residential and combined-density residential to general residential. The subject property is two point four hectares in size and is currently undeveloped. It is located on the east side of one hundred and fifteenth street, north of one hundred and sixth avenue, and in the Westgate East neighborhood. The subject property is located when the, within the Westgate Area Structure Plan, as well as within the Westgate East Outline Plan area. Resonings are required to be consistent with these plans. Therefore, to approve the rezoning amendments to the, these plans are also required. To give you a bit about the site context, the area to the west is vacant and it's designated as future commercial sites. To the east is low-density residential. To the south is a vacant high-density site, as well as a high-density, a medium-density residential site. So to talk about the municipal development plan, the municipal development plan is the city's primary land use policy document and was adopted in two thousand and ten. The following provisions of the MDP are applicable to this proposal. The future land use conforms with the future land use in the municipal development plan, which is residential. Through this application, we're requesting that council adopt the outline plan as a bylaw. The MDP Policy fifteen point seven point one states that council intends to convert existing outline plans to statutory pla- plans. Consistent with this MDP policy, the Westgate East Outline Plan is being presented in its entirety in order to convert the existing plan that was adopted by resolution to a bylaw. It's also consistent with the mix of housing choices policy. Policy six point nineteen states the city will strive to maintain a mix of housing choices. In order to achieve this, the city aims, aims to maintain a twenty-five percent dwelling unit as multifamily. Multifamily is three units and up. The proposed amendment reduces the percentage of multifamily dwellings within the area from approximately eighty percent to approximately seventy percent. Therefore, this amendment is consistent with that policy by still providing a significant amount of higher-density dwelling units. It is also in conformance with Policy six seventeen, reclassification of multifamily sites. Policy six seventeen is applicable to this application as it meets the following criteria. The site is unserviced. The site lends itself to a reasonable configuration in terms of roads, access, servicing, and lauding. And the reclassification of the site will not introduce any land use incompatibility issues. If the redesignation is approved, the developer is required to pay twelve thousand dollars, which is five thousand dollars per hectare. Administration has received a check from the applicant in this amount. The Westgate Area Structure Plan. The ASP is a high-level planning document in the development process. It provides the generalized structure of the proposed development concept in terms of land use and servicing. The site is currently designated as high-density residential in the Westgate Area Structure Plan. The proposed change from high-density to low-density is not expected to create any adverse land use impacts on existing or future development in the area. It is also consistent, or the outline plan provides the detailed framework for the future development within the planned boundary, including the layout of roads and lanes, open spaces, land use, and zoning. Administration does not any, anticipate any land use compatibility issues arising between the commercial businesses and the single detached dwellings in the neighborhood. The proposed land use bylaw amendment would rezone the subject properties from high-density residential and combined-density residential to general residential. This rezoning would accommodate the development of single and semi-detached dwellings with a minimum lot width of twelve point two meters. Consistent with the Municipal Government Act, advertising has been completed. The reme- the amendments were advertised in the newspaper, posted on the city website, a notice was placed on the property, and letters were sent to adjacent property owners. Administration has not received any comments in response to any of the notifications. In summary, the applicant is requesting to amend the Westgate Area Structure Plan, the Westgate East Outline Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw to rezone the subject property from high-density residential and combined-density residential to general residential. The proposed amendments are consistent with municipal development plan, compatible with the adjacent land uses in the neighborhood, and maintain council's vision for the Westgate East neighborhood as a mixed-use community. For these reasons, administration recommends that council give Bylaw C eleven eighty-six dash two, Bylaw C thirteen seventy-three, and Bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighty-seven three readings. For compliance with the MDP, administration also recommends that council rescind Outline Plan OP dash oh seven dash oh six to replace it with Bylaw C thirteen seventy-three.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Um, so before we go into the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, a brief opportunity for questions from council for administration. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question that I've got from my own education is I'm looking at the transportation transit plan, and there's both sidewalks and common trails marked. What is a common trail and what's that look like on the ground?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just flip to the map.
It's exhibit nine, if that helps.
So in this context, the common trails would be the three-meter-wide asphalt trails required on our commercial and arterial roads under our engineering standards, where sidewalks are, are sidewalks.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Ms. Downing. Counselor Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, and Ms. Downing, just, uh, for my own education as well, I'm looking at the area land, uh, just directly north of the area that's being proposed for, for rezoning. Uh, my question is, uh, how is that land up north zoned?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The area to the north of that is the West Terra, uh, Outline Plan area that is currently vacant, but it is a mixed-use community that has a, uh, PUL area directly to the north, commercial areas, as well as low-density residential. So it's a high mix of uses in that area that is compatible with this plan.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Uh, any other questions for administration? I had one, Ms. Downing. Um, the, uh, commercial area to the west, where will access to those commercial lots be from?
Thank you, Mayor Given. At this point, the development permit hasn't been, uh, looked at yet, but the engineering department will review that permit and make decisions based on the access, based on this configuration. And engineering has reviewed the access, so I would guess that it would be directly across from the access to this cul-de-sac, but that would be further reviewed at the development permit stage.
Safe to say that it's not from one hundred and sixteenth street?
To the commercial properties?
Yes.
Perhaps I'll let the applicant speak more to that, because I, I can't say for sure if it wouldn't be from one hundred and sixteenth street.
That's fair. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Uh, so we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and I would, uh, look to see if there's anyone here to speak in support of the proposed, uh, amendments and associated rezoning. And is there anybody wishing to come forward to speak to this? Welcome, gentlemen. If you'll come down, uh, make your way to the table, and if you'd just introduce yourselves for a recording secretary, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my name is Dennis Huzzy. I'm with Bearstone Associates. We were, we prepared the application on behalf of our client, Wexford.
Uh, my name's Kendall Rasney. I'm a principal with Wexford Developments, the developer of Westgate East and Westgate West.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Um, so yeah, like I said, we've prepared the application. So if you guys do have any questions, we'd be happy to answer anything you may have.
And I'll just make a real quick comment. Um, we've developed over a hundred million dollars into Westgate. Uh, we're committed to Grand Prairie. This zoning has not worked. We've not been able to sell the land or develop the land to numbers that work for the last six years. Um, as you can see, we've developed most things around it. So we're just looking to, uh, develop something that works for the market conditions. And, uh, we're ready to go. If this zoning goes forward, we're beginning to service this land immediately next month.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Any questions for the delegation? Maybe, uh, I could ask you, I don't see anybody else in the queue, maybe I could ask you to speak to that access question. Um, and I just wonder about, uh, essentially what looks like a keyhole pointing at what will likely be a front or back end of commercial building. So I don't know if you have any, um, intentions or anything more description you can give about the access to those commercial sites.
Unless you know someone at A.T. that I don't, the access will be not off one sixteenth street. It will be off the, uh, the street to the, directly to the, I, I guess that would be the east of that. So.
So, um, I guess, and the reason that I ask is that, that keyhole, if we want to call it that, essentially, uh, people entering and exiting their, uh, their homes will have to drive into, and I guess, front on to a, a commercial property. So was there any consideration of having that keyhole at a different location? Um, so that would, there would be side yards or backyards?
Uh, well, the way we designed that, that bay is that so that, oh, really only the two end homes, uh, directly face onto the commercial. That was our, the, the, I guess, least impact we could have to those homes.
We tried to avoid having too many houses backing onto the commercial. So if there's a hotel or something like that, not directly looking into somebody's backyards, more side yards.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see any. Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here this evening. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak, uh, this evening to, uh, these proposed, um, Bylaw Amendments and Area Structure Plan Amendments in the Westgate area? Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue? I'll call one last time if there's anyone else who wished to speak to the, uh, Westgate Area Structure Plan Amendment and associated, uh, uh, Outline Plan and Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll ask council one last time if there are any questions for administration. This is the last opportunity for questions. Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to business arising. I'll close the public hearing. I'll move on to business arising, and, uh, I would, uh, look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would, uh, move that council give first reading to Bylaw C dash eleven eighty-six dash two, being an amendment to the Westgate Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. We've got a handful of these things to do with all the associated plans, so I will, uh, call for the vote on first reading. We have no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give second reading to Bylaw C dash eleven eighty-six dash two.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. So this is a motion for second reading for the Westgate Area Structure Plan Amendment. Is there any discussion or debate on that second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. In the queue, that motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would, uh, recommend that, uh, or move that council have third reading for Bylaw C dash eleven eighty-six dash two at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Uh, you'll hear me say this again tonight, uh, but in order for council to have all three readings of a bylaw at one meeting, uh, we have to have a motion to approve to have that third and final reading. The motion must pass unanimously. If it doesn't, then all subsequent readings would come back at a future council meeting. Uh, so is there any discussion, debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, council. I'm looking for one vote that maybe didn't register there. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson, we can have third and final reading.
You bet, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give third reading to Bylaw C dash eleven eighty-six dash two, being an amendment to the Westgate Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Uh, Counselor Thieson, do you want to continue on?
Yeah, I don't mind. Um, I would, uh, move that council give first reading to Bylaw C dash thirteen seventy-three, being the adoption amendment of the Westgate East Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much. This is a motion for first reading, and there's no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
I would move that council give second reading to Bylaw C dash thirteen seventy-three.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. This is a motion for second reading. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would look to my council and request that, uh, council have third reading for Bylaw C dash thirteen seventy-three at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Everybody heard me do the spiel once. I won't say it again, but this is a motion to have third and final reading. Uh, is there any discussion and debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
And finally, I would move that council give third reading to Bylaw C dash thirteen seventy-three, being the adoption and amendment to the Westgate East Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Is there any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and we have, uh, one more plan associated that, uh, we need to make an amendment to. Can I get a motion for first reading for that?
Thanks for giving me a second to clear my throat. I'd move that council give first reading to Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-seven, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Again, a first reading, so we have no discussion or debate. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
I would move that council give second reading to Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-seven.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
I would respectfully plead for council that we have third reading for Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-seven at this meeting.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. This is another one of those motions to have third and final reading. Uh, and just speaking to this, because we actually have, uh, an audience this evening. Uh, in the past, council would have done first reading at one council meeting, and then the final two readings would have come back later on, a number of weeks later. And so in an effort to speed up development, uh, we amended our process that all third readings could happen here. It takes us a little bit longer, but it actually helps the, uh, business community by being able to move these things through the process a little bit quicker without that couple of week delay or month delays in some cases. Um, is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen.
Ooh, I'm batting a thousand here today. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-87, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and there was one item left to rescind the Westgate East Outline Plan. Counselor Thiessen.
I shall take care of that, too. I would move that council rescind the Westgate East Outline Plan OP-0706. In case you missed it earlier in the meeting, the purpose of this is just to streamline it right into our land use bylaw and to discontinue the use of the outline plan as the guiding force for this area of our city.
Sure. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen, and I think this has perhaps superseded, I think, that there was two overlapping outline plans, since this clarifies which one is actually in force. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion of rescind Westgate East Outline Plan? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That's all of our business related to the Westgate Area Structure Plan and associated amendments. We have no items of unfinished business, and so that can take us into reports. Item 8.1, the Vision West Business Park Outline Plan. I would look to administration for an introduction. Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The recommendation here is that council by resolution rescind the Westgate, the Vision West Business Park Outline Plan, OP-0701. So the Vision West Outline Plan was adopted by bylaw on May 1st, 2017, when council was considering a proposed amendment, similar to the Westgate East that we just went through. However, at that time, an administration error occurred when that outline plan, which was previously adopted by resolution, was not rescinded. So by rescinding that plan, this clears up that discrepancy there.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any discussion or, sorry, can I have a motion with respect to rescinding that Vision West Business Park Outline Plan? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd make a motion that council rescind the Vision West Business Park Outline Plan OP-0701.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Any discussion or debate, questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and it will bring us to item 8.2, bylaw C-1248A, intermunicipal development plan technical amendments. I'd look to administration for a brief introduction before I call for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Given. On January 1st, 2016, the city of Grand Prairie annexed approximately 6,316 hectares of land from the county. This annexation proceeded in accordance with the short-term annexation policies that are located in the intermunicipal development plan. Because the short-term annexation land was annexed by the city, these short-term annexation policies are no longer relevant, and so bylaw C-1248A proposes to reflect this annexation by removing any reference to the short-term annexation area of the plan. And so with that, administration is here tonight to request council give first reading to the proposed bylaw in accordance with the schedule as shown on screen. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Thompson. Council, can I get a motion? Counselor Menhas.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Well Given. I'll move the motion council give the first reading to bylaw C-1248A, being a technical amendment to the interprovincial development plan.
Thanks, Counselor Menhas, and I think that's intermunicipal. We're not taking over B.C. yet. The county, the county maybe one bit at a time, but not British Columbia yet, but.
We don't go to B.C.
Thanks very much, Counselor Menhas. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Any questions or comments? I did have one for administration. Mr. Thompson, do these technical amendments, do they update the intermunicipal development plan to respond to the new requirements under the amended municipal government act?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't believe the purpose of this is to reflect the new changes. I believe the purpose of this amendment is to simply reflect the new annexation.
And so that may be work that would be to be done. And does the, does the intermunicipal development plan have a regular review period? And if so, how, how long is it between reviews, and how long has it been?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The IDP, the current IDP, hasn't been reviewed upon adoption, so this would be the first time that it's being reviewed, and this is in accordance with those review policies in the plan.
So it's, it's been since 2010 since it's had any changes?
That's correct.
And they're, okay, okay, thank you very much. Thanks very much, Counselor Menhas, for the motion. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and in almost a little bit of a throwback to what we used to have to do with these kind of bylaws, I'm informed by management that we should set a date, time, and location for the public hearing. I don't know if that was circulated to all council members, but Terry had provided me with the wording that the motion we'd be looking for is to move that the public hearing for bylaw C-1248A, intermunicipal development plan technical amendments be held on March 26, 2018, at the Palmeroy Hotel, starting at 3:00 P.M. Somebody care to make that motion? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate as with respect to date, time, and location? I would just say that I believe that date, time, and location has been arranged by city and county administration to ensure availability of both councils, but setting it now allows it to be publicly advertised. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that'll bring us to item 8.3, policy 317, large-scale tourism events funding. I will look to administration for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So amendments to policy 317 for funding for large-scale tourism events is presented with some language and housekeeping cleanup in the policy. The policy was reviewed by the Committee of Living Committee on February 13th, and there's just some very minor changes around language and eligibility for funding. The funding for 2018 for city council, there's nothing approved at this time. Ms. Walker will be bringing a report in April identifying a potential funding source for approval to committee, and, yeah, if there's any questions.
Thanks very much. Any questions for administration? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Got a question for administration. Has there been a maximum amount that any one group or organization could request and be given?
Thank you, through Mayor Given. The details around the, or the procedure amendments are going forward to City Manager Bob Nicolay for approval.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. So maybe I'll just look to the city manager. Council typically doesn't get into administrative procedures, but some of the administrative procedures, I guess, relate directly to the structure of the program, and so how would you recommend that we would handle council input on, on those? Because I think the input is likely not on the policy, which is the why we have it. There probably will be more questions, I have at least one anyhow, on the what we're, how we're going to implement it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would welcome, the material was included in your package for information. It isn't to be voted on per se, as it is administrative purview, but this would be the appropriate venue in which to ask questions, make comments, or give direction to administration to make sure that procedure works for you.
So if there are amendments or directions that council would like to see reflected in the procedure, would that be through a motion giving direction to management?
Wouldn't necessarily require a motion, Mr. Chairman. Direction can be given just through the discussion at council.
Okay, okay. So council will have a look and see how that goes. If there's something that there's not a clear consensus on, then I might ask council to make a motion on it, if that way we can ensure that we're speaking with on voice and management, gets a clear picture of the intent of the whole of council. Counselor Gressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it is just worth pointing out why we're doing this in a bit of an unusual fashion, and that was the committee's request, in that we're getting close to the, close to summer. Usually, my understanding is the procedure would have come before committee, and we would have done this at the committee meeting would be more usual. It's unusual because we didn't want to delay this too close to summer, so I just thought that was worth explaining.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Counselor Gressi. We should have a motion, though, to approve the policy, and I think any direction to management could follow after that. So can I get a motion to approve policy 317, funding for large-scale tourism events? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd make a motion that we approve funding for this policy for, or sorry, approve this policy for 317 for funding of large-scale tourism events.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Any discussion or debate with respect to the policy? I'm just making a differentiation there between the policy and the procedure. Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Given. I just feel that, I see it's 25% of the total fund, but I, in a large-scale situation like this, I don't know how much money a person would be, or a group would be able to get, so I was just hoping that maybe a maximum of $50,000 to any one group would be the type, would be the cap, and I was just wondering how council felt with that.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, and I'll just clarify, as I had a similar question. When I looked at the committee report, I think it referenced the 25% of the total fund, but when I look at the actual procedure, it references 50% of the annual fund. So, under the procedure, item number six, references that no single funding request will exceed 50%. Karen, did you want to clarify?
Yes, Mayor Given, so the information in the report is went to the Committee of Living Committee on February 13th. Since that meeting, there has been further amendments that have not been approved, and we'll go forward to Mr. Nicolay for approval.
Okay, so the procedure that management will be reviewing is the one that contained council's package, which contains a few yellow highlighted items. Some of those are based on feedback from the committee meeting, is that correct? And so I see that reflected as item number six, no single funding request will exceed 50% of the annual large-scale tourism events budget. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I actually had a similar question about number six. I was kind of concerned that maybe 50% was a lot, if we could, basically, we'd only be able to have potentially three events, so I was kind of wondering what the appetite accounts might be to look at that, maybe being only 25% as well. And my other comment, I guess, or question for maybe for administration from Ms. McGurkerson was just to, on number two about the applications receiving a funding, it's saying unexpected funds must be returned to the city. I guess what I'm wondering is what's that based on? I'm assuming that they give us a budget, and there's a bottom line for, for kind of a hopeful profit or whatever. Am I to assume that 100% of anything over and above that would come back to the city? Or, I'm just trying to get some clarification on where you're at, please.
Ms. McGurkerson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So yes, any unexpended funding will be returned to the city. There's some rigorous reporting that follows after the event, that administration will be following up with the applicants on to ensure that the project, how it was budgeted, was followed through, and anything that was not expended through the event would be returned back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Palat.
Sorry, just, I guess on that note, is, is there any way we, I'm wondering about with events like this, if there's a potential that they might have agreements in place with other people, that if there was a profit, that they were going to recapture some of that back, if we'd have precedence on that, or how that would look? Or if that's more of a legal thing, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So that certainly can be considered through the contract, and that's another consideration through this revised procedure that we'll be working with Mr. Nicolay on, is a formal contract with some more stringent considerations, such as whether there's a return back, or profit made on the event, and how that could be considered back for the, for the tourism funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just, I know it's been a while since this hit the committee, but I do believe a lot of the discussion that was around the committee, this last question was up there, if, if an event makes a profit, does it, does it go back to the city coffers? I think that just creates a perpetual cycle where we give money, we get it back, we give money, we get it back, we give money, we get it back. It's not doing anything to really build in sustainability for the event. I bet you every event that were to achieve any kind of funding, funding would be able to show that, hey, we spent all that money, and even when they make a profit, you know, they could easily turn it into a savings account, or, or say, oh, that's for next year's event. So I think that guideline might be a bit hard to enforce, because people don't go into event planning to, to lose money and constantly ask for money over and over again. They, their aim is to hopefully one day be sustainable. The other part of it is, is in regards to the, the single funding request, the discussion was originally around the 25%, because that was what was proposed to committee, and committee thought at the time when we sent it forward that maybe 25% might be too low, especially if there was an event that's like was a standout event, so we requested administration to, to look into that and potentially revise it. Some of the other revisions, you see it in the report, but it's not in the actual procedure or policy, but that teepee creek is eligible for funding. Committee helped to take that out, being that it was, it's 50 kilometers away, and we're trying to draw people from farther than 40 kilometers away, so it's kind of a contradiction to the policy. As, as it stands right now, I only have one question after all these comments, and my question is just on the deadline for submission of the funding application. Currently, it says it's March 1st. We've already established that we haven't established a source of funding yet, but we're looking into that for April. Does this then preclude any applications that may be coming forward for 2018, and would that be deferred to 2019? Or would we just be accepting any kind of applications if this were to go through after we find the funding source?
Ms. McGurkerson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That's a good question, and actually, I think what would be reasonable is we have an application form that has been revised, and pending any changes back from the policy tonight from city council, that online application could be available at any time. Once the procedure is finalized, we could update, you know, the webpage that the application's on, and any applicants that have submitted applications would be notified of an extended deadline for this year, considering that it's already passed. So I think that would be reasonable, and could give people the opportunity now if they want to start putting together their application information, and then if there's any small amendments, we could notify them of any changes.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackman?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a simple question regarding item four, changing the funding criteria to annual funding. Is it right for me to assume that what we're talking about is allowing the same organization to reapply each year? Is that all that means?
Yes, so, Mayor Given, the previous policy allowed for multi-year funding. This brings it down to an annual funding application request.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith and McGurkerson? The one bit of feedback that I have on the procedure is respect to number five in terms of event locations. I appreciate the inclusion of Evergreen Park, recognizing that there's some very major tourism events that happen there, but I wouldn't see a need to have any other locations outside the city of Grand Prairie. I see the Crosslink County Sportsplex currently listed, although the indoor turf field is unique in our region. The hockey rinks certainly aren't, and I, I would be more in favor of seeing the sportsplex struck from that list. I think the intent is to draw tourists directly inside city limits to support local businesses as much as possible, but that would be, that would be my preference. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I just didn't quite understand the funding, so can, can I get that funding source, the amount that could be allotted, repeated again?
It was $200,000.
$200,000 is the maximum amount a person could get?
No, 50% of $200,000.
$100,000.
Okay, is there any other discussion? No, we're voting specifically on the policy. I would suggest that if there are specifics around the procedure, that we make a motion directing administration to amend the procedure in such a way. that we make a motion directing administration to amend the procedure in such a way. Is there any discussion or debate on the policy? Counselor Thiessen? No? Counselor Clayton on the policy? No? Okay, so seeing nothing on the policy, then I will call for the vote on Policy 317. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any direction, motions of direction for administration in reviewing the procedure? Counselor Bressi?
Sorry, I don't have a motion, but I've got a question. I didn't get a chance to get in. And it's referring to the economic models and the economic proof for requiring events to submit. Are we offering any kind of guidance on how they can go about doing that, or any kind of help for new events to know where to go to figure that out?
Ms. McGurkerson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So actually, I've been in conversations with local tourism, and the executive director there has indicated an interest in supporting local events. They already play this role as part of their community offering, as well, any sporting events for the STEAM report that comes in. The GP Sport Council also provides social services as well.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I hope that got the answer to your question. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, at committee meeting, I also thought the Crosslink County Sportsplex might not be on there. But one change that I might have to this procedure that I would propose to council is currently, as the procedure runs, it would run through our corporate leadership team, and then go through the Community Living Committee, at which point it would be passed, and then just council would be informed pretty much at the council meeting. So if there's, there's one change I would, I would make, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I would, I would make it so that council has that, oh, wait. Yeah, I would make sure that, oh, never mind, it's already in there. Sorry, I missed that. I glossed over, saw you nodding, so I, I knew I missed something. Never mind. I would, I would be in favor of taking out the Crosslink County Sportsplex. How about that?
Nicely backtracked. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple concerns I have, and I'm not really ready to make a motion yet, but as people seem to be sharing their opinion, I'll take my stab at this. I think it's imperative for us to have the Crosslink as part of the list. And I only say that although ice surfaces aren't unique, to have a large-scale tourism event, what, what means large-scale tourism, in my opinion, requires more ice surface than the city currently has. And so I think it's imperative for us to keep the Crosslink there. I do have a little bit of concern about the 35% being 40 kilometers or greater. If you're going to benefit the hospitality industry, you need to be more like, something that somebody wouldn't drive there and back in one day. And 40 kilometers is easy for people to do. They drive it to work every day each way. So I would like to see that number increased. And then the 50%, to me, my biggest concern would be that, that a festival that everybody sees value, and, and it is a great opportunity for our region, takes 50% of that fun in the early season, and, and then therefore, there's only 50 left to divide between four in the latter part of the year. That concerns me. So I would like to see that 50% number lower. And I would like to see the kilometers increased. And, yeah, and I think that we leave the Crosslink County Sportsplex there. Thank you.
You can start to see why I was suggesting that if we had direction, it may be via motion, because I think there's a range of different opinions. No, no, but I think that made the point that council is not all of the same mind on this. Counselor O'Toole?
Well, I'll try a motion, if that would be okay with you, Mayor Given. Make a motion that the amount of funding at one source would be 25% of the total amount.
And so all of these motions are direction to administration? That motion is in order that item six reflect that no funding request exceed 25% of the annual budget. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I am very strongly opposed to the motion. And the reason for that is that in my mind, this event, this fund should go towards new events or events that have plans to significantly expand. This isn't about us giving some money to a whole bunch of local events. It's about us very strategically picking a few events that we think can use that shot in the arm right now. So I think that it's, it could be appropriate for council to decide to give larger than 25% to a single event, if that's the strategic investment we want to make. I would point out that we're not delegating authority to, to allocate funds in this. We are keeping the authority to council. So it's totally within our prerogative to say, sorry, this year, we've got four events we like, we're only going to give 25%. Or, you know, give 10, 10 events, 10%. That's totally within our authority. But I also want to make it, make it so events can ask big, and they can make a strategic pitch on why it's worth us allocating big funds to them. So I'm strongly opposed.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on Counselor O'Toole's motion? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm not going to say I'm strongly opposed, but I'm definitely opposed to the motion on the table. Counselor Bressi pretty much said everything that I was going to say. But I just add, add to that, I know Counselor Clayton had concerns that in the second round of applications, that there would be no money left. But according to the new procedure, it's just a one date. So everyone would have to apply for the March 1st. So it's, it's not like we do a second date, and, oh, there's no money left over. So I'm totally okay with this, and I'm totally okay with council strategically deciding which events we think are going to most benefit our community going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. I'll just say that I'm not going to support the motion. I agree that the 50% is appropriate, considering that the intent of the policy is for large-scale tourism events. The city already does have festival funding and other sponsorship funding. Festival funding, over the years, I've seen a max, you know, I think of $15,000. And so there is an opportunity for events to receive nearly one quarter of this fund. I think the express intent of this is to have large-scale events that will draw people in for much further, and that's why the 50% is appropriate in my mind. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm going to support the motion more, just because I do feel that it's a precedence that if we put it out there at March 1st, everybody applies. If I'm a group that's looking at doing an event and I need 50%, that might be the, the hinging point of me even actually applying. And so I'm worried that if we, we give them an opportunity for 50, then we come back as a group and say, well, actually, to make the math work, we can only give you 25, and we squash their dreams at that point. So I'd rather start with a bar at 25%.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote on Counselor O'Toole's motion to reflect the maximum amount any fund, any event could request to be 25% of the annual budget. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry on a tie. So that motion does not pass on a, on a four-to-four tie in council chambers. The tie does not go to the runner. Whoever the, whoever the runner might be. So the council is not giving any direction to change that. Were there any other items that council wanted to give direction to administration on? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would just simply move to strike a Crosslink County Sportplex from the procedure.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Clayton, do you want to speak to that?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I will not support this motion. I think that as we continue to provide regional services for recreation, that it's imperative that we work regionally to create large-scale tourism events that help our region. Therefore, we need to include as many opportunities as possible. Ice surfaces are used widely in our region, and if we want to have large-scale tourism in our region, we need as many ice surfaces as possible available. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Palat?
I, I also see no problem leaving it in there. We always have the ability to say no to funding. But I think it looks pretty neighborly, and like Counselor Clayton said, there's events that we can't quite host just because of our own facilities. So I see no harm with leaving it in there for now.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. I see Counselor Bressi in the queue. I'll just say that I will support the motion. I think the intent really is to, in a fit, to demonstrate a specific benefit to Grand Prairie businesses locally with inside-city limits. My concern around, I appreciate the point around the number of ice surfaces available in the region could give the potential to host a much larger hockey tournament, for example. And there might be a way to do that, to say that the Crosslink could be used if it was in combination with other city venues. I, my concern would be that we start to see a number of events happening exclusively outside city limits. The city has supported the region in the development of the Competitive Sports Commission. That was initially a city-only commission. On request of the region, we expanded its jurisdiction, and we, to my knowledge, haven't had an event inside city limit since. Two, so, so it's been two years since we've had an event inside city limit. So the city is currently supporting the Competitive Sports Commission's operations, and resourcing it, and staffing it, and supporting it. And there are no events happening inside city limits, in any city venues. So that would be my concern here. If there was a way to mitigate that, I'd be open to it. I think it's probably, at least for this first year, cleaner to just delete the sportsplex. And should there be an event that came to our attention that needed that, then we could revise this. I would be open to that. But I will support the motion to see it struck. Counselor Clayton?
Mayor Given, although I appreciate your concerns for what would possibly be preventing events from solely being offered in another municipality, I think that with the opportunity for council to have input on this, that if there was an event going to be offered not in conjunction with the city facility, we could deny the funding. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I really do believe that what we're talking about here is tourism. And it may be that an event would take place outside of town. But the whole idea with tourism is to attract people to the region where they would come and use accommodation, retail, food, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that if people are coming to the county sportsplex, they're still likely going to be coming into Grand Prairie to take advantage of those things. And so I think we do achieve the, the tourism goals of this large-scale funding, even though we may include the sportsplex.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll just close on this one. I mean no ill will to the county. In fact, I look forward to upcoming negotiations on our intermunicipal collaboration framework. We also have a regional recreation master plan. And there's lots of open areas and channels that we can take to fit in tourism events that benefit the entire region. We'll do that through discussion and through dialogue. Currently, right now, my obligation is to my taxpayers in the city of Grand Prairie, and I don't want to be giving out $50,000 to $100,000 to see an event largely populate Claremont. I'm sorry to say, I think some might, may come into the city and, and do that. But I'd feel more comfortable about it if we had a, if we had a good split on this. Like, let's say we each chipped in $200,000, and then we could really benefit the region all around. But we're only going to achieve that through discussion. We're not going to achieve anything by handing things out freely from the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen, for that close on your motion. I will call for the vote on directing management to delete the county sportsplex from item number five. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. And so is there any other business rising? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just sort of, if, if it's all right, I'd like to ask administration a question before I, before I phrase this motion. So a question for administration, can you tell me the reason of why you picked the kilometers you did? The justification? I'm just wondering if I'm missing something, or, or where you came up with that number of 40 kilometers, what the sort of goal was there?
Ms. McGurkerson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the 40 kilometers was in the first policy that was approved last year. And there was no discussion around amending that, so it was, it was kept in as was, yep.
I, I, and thank you for that. We all know that many events happen in surrounding municipalities and some in other provinces that people may drive to in one time, and sometimes they stay in those communities, and sometimes they don't. So it's hard for me to pick a number, which I think is really going to have an impact on local hospitality. Some people choose to drive to Edmonton back in one day, and, and, you know, and, and some people might go to Dawson Creek for a concert and spend the night. So it's hard to pick a number, in my opinion, that has some impact. However, I think 40 kilometers is just too little. So I'm fine with a 35% sort of threshold for the number of people, but I'd like to see this, the kilometer distance increase. So I'll make a motion to amend the procedure to reflect 100-kilometer distance, 35% to the attendees being at a minimum of 100-kilometer attendance. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So that motion is specific to something that we see in the procedure. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, thank you. I, I like where Counselor Clayton's going with this, and it's something I could see myself being supportive of in the future. But I think right now, frankly, looking at all the grants that were given out to past events, I don't think any of them would have qualified, qualified under this, if I'm recalling reports right. I could be wrong on that. But it's something that I'm worried might be shooting yourselves in the foot without giving further reflection. So it's, I'm going to vote against it, no, but I really do think that this is something that's worth us revisiting for the next funding cycle. And I, it's going to take us some time to refine this. I'm just worried about the unintended consequences of, 35% is really steep for 100 kilometers away, in my mind.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, Mayor Given, I'll be supporting this motion. I feel that an hour's drive is not that far for most people in this part of the country. And, and I think that you'll be surprised how many people do actually drive an hour away. You look at Valley View, you look at Dawson Creek, and it's pretty popular to drive there and back. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I see Counselor Clayton, I see in the queue, but, yeah, I'll let you close. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In my experience with the Street Performers Festival, where we go and, and do shows in places like Hythe and Beaver Lodge, Spirit River, some of those are, are within 100 kilometers. But those people don't, who come to that festival, don't necessarily just up and come without a lot of encouragement. And I think that if we're successful in bringing people from those kinds of communities to an event in town, then we are indeed bringing people who may not otherwise come. So I would oppose the change.
Ms. Counselor Blackburn? Any other discussion or debate before I turn to Counselor Clayton to close? I don't see anyone else. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In closing, I would just like to say that this criteria is a large-scale tourism. And in order to be large-scale tourism, 35% of people, which really is 50 minutes away, if you're driving the speed limit, is not too much to ask. I think if we want large-scale tourism, we need to grow tourism, which in turn means filling not just our downtown businesses, it also means filling hotels. And people don't book hotels that live 100 kilometers away or less. We need to be considerate of the fact that this isn't just offering opportunities for our residents. It's, it's creating economic development in the sense that it's bringing business to all levels of business, not just the Tim Hortons on the way in, but possibly the hotels, plus possibly the shopping center, because you're staying more than one day. And so to be less than an hour or less than 100 kilometers away, in my opinion, doesn't meet the large-scale tourism. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton, for those comments to close. I will call for the vote on Counselor Clayton's motion to amend under point number two, the 40 kilometers to be 100 kilometers. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. Was there any other business arising from Policy 317? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I think we're okay to move on. And that takes us out of our reports and into committee business, starting with 9.1, Community Living Committee, from February 13th. Counselor Thiessen, I think that's your set of minutes.
Sorry, I was, I was not ready. Let me get my, my map here. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on those, that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just one piece of business coming out of that meeting. It seems so long ago now, as around the Smith subdivision and Grand Spirit Foundation. And this is in discussion about the Smith sublands that the city purchased in the last term. But I would move that council endorse allocating a portion of land within the Smith subdivision to the Grand Spirit Foundation. If my memory is, correct me, anyone, if my memory is, is wrong. But I believe that the, the requested amount that they felt would be good for us to put aside for them was roughly about five acres, so that we could, we could move that along and then predevelop it. Now, this isn't specifying where it goes on the land, it's just, we're holding five acres of land. And then once council endorses this, then we'll move along the process through our administration.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. I wasn't able to be in attendance at that meeting, so I was wondering about the, the amount of land, and I wonder if management- of land, and I wonder if management will need more direction on the amount, or is that in discussion with Grand Spirit? What was the discussion at the committee meeting?
There was a discussion, I believe, Chris, I'm not remembering his last name, the representative from the Grand Spirit Foundation came in and said, oh, Steve Madden. I thought it was Chris Madden, but it was, yeah, Steve Madden, okay. He came in and said that what they would require is about five acres, which is similar to what they have out in Claremont right now and supporting the housing out there that went out previously.
Okay. Anything else to add? I would, I think I would prefer to see the amount set specified. Is it half the parcel? Is it? So I don't know, Counselor Blackburn, if, from the Grand Spirit perspective, if they had anything more specific, or if they were looking to have some flexibility if it was 5.2 acres, and we said it was only five, then that could be a problem. Counselor Blackburn, do you have?
I don't have the information in front of me, so I can't give you the exact number, but it was approximately half of the space available.
Okay. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I just pulled up the report here. It's essentially five acres would provide roughly 90 to 120 units on the site and take up just a little under half of that parcel.
Thanks very much. Counselor Resi.
I think it's also worth noting that part of the discussion was, nothing's really committed. The project would be going here at this point. What's really going on is they want to start building a business case, they want to start going after funding, and they need a promise that we're going to give them some land to do that. There is even a discussion of, this place works for this, maybe it's not the best place we can find for this, and maybe we can find more ideal land, and at that time, they'd likely be able to move their business case and their funding to another place. So right now, it's not so much of saying specifically, here's where you're going to be, it's saying, we'll give you something if you get some funding, so that funders can have comfort.
Okay. And thanks very much, council members, for filling me in there. I'm comfortable the ambiguity here is actually helpful and allows us additional flexibility. So thanks very much for clearing that up for me. Is there any other discussion or debates on Counselor Thiessen's motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen, anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, just a couple. Actually, it was Chris Bruce was the delegation that was at that meeting, which is where I was messing up Steve Madden, Chris Bruce, who came to talk to council about how we could possibly make Grand Prairie a more accessible place for persons with disabilities. Our administration is already moving forward on taking some of the suggestions that were presented at that and in an email that followed. Also, we had an update on the St. Catherine School studio space. Council or committee received that one for information. You may recall that this was a development space according to the Scores Agreement that actually just started spiraling out of control cost-wise, according to the estimates with some of the entrywork that was done. So we received that for information, and we'll seek out future partnerships through Scores. The only other thing to talk about was the large-scale tourism event funding, and we already dealt with that business. So it's a long time away, but I look forward to the meeting tomorrow, too.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. We'll move on to Corporate Services Committee meeting from February 13th. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we should correct before we formally adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Oh, I got a couple. We had Ms. Laurie Godet, Procurement Manager, presented to committee an update on her first three months in her new position, as well as providing information on current projects and immediate goals of the Purchasing and Procurement Department. And I've talked to a number of people in the business community here that deal with the city, and they're very pleased with the new person in the seat. And she's had a lot of, Ms. Godet has had a lot of meetings with some of the people that we do business with, one-on-one. And also, we had the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. We received a letter to join the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association, and the city, I think we're going to be talking about that here in the next report. But just like I said before, about 10% of our city population is French as a first language, not a second language in this community. So when you look at our population, near 70,000 people, there are 7,000 people from all around the world that come to Grand Prairie and that speak French. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I think that takes us to Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting. Item 9.3. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, February 20th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Counselor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm not sure what the procedure for this is, but I'd love to see the minutes amended show that during item 2.2, I excused myself from the room due to a pecuniary interest.
Absolutely, it should reflect that. Thank you very much, Counselor Resi, for that catch. Terry will make sure that's caught. Thank you. Any other errors or omissions that we need to reflect in the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt the minutes as amended. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Not really. I think, other than, you know, we had our, which, sort of a point of interest for people that might be watching or people in the audience, on every time we have an Infrastructure Protective Services meeting, we are going to have a downtown rehabilitation project update. So this committee, we had one of those as well, which was a nice sort of addition as we go into the next phase of downtown construction. This time around, it's nice to sort of have on a, every second week, sort of an update. So that was a nice piece that was added, and the rest was pretty much in camera. So anything else for that?
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So if you want to move on to 9.4, then?
Sure. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, March 6th, as presented.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision endorsement for Z14-0031 to January 29th, 2019.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on this motion? I don't see anybody ringing in. I would just note that this is in alignment with the city's new policy on time extension requests. It had been circulated. Management and the partners that we circulate to didn't see any reason to hold it up, and so that's why we came forward with a positive recommendation from management. Again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve hosting the 2018 midterm meeting of the Francophone and Francophile Cities Network with a budget of up to $44,000. And speaking to that motion, there was a delegation, Mr. Brian Glavine brought forward a request from this association, and it's been held in many other places. Most recently, I think it was held in Louisiana. So this is truly an opportunity for people to come to Grand Prairie and see what a bilingual city we are and get to come to our region, and I think it would truly be an opportunity if we are awarded this. So I support this motion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Open for discussion or debate. Counselor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm definitely in support of joining these, but I'm just curious with joining the ABMA Association. I know that the last council worked to remove council appointments from some of the associations they felt they weren't getting the bang for their buck, and my concern is if we start adding them, then all of a sudden we realize that they're not worth the time and resource we're putting in. So I'm wondering if we have a way to revisit this in a year or two years to see, was this actually a good move or not?
Sure, absolutely. I'm appreciating that it's reflecting in our reports as two motions. I think Counselor Clayton is making one specific to the funding for the meeting. So maybe we'll just hold that, and we can speak to it when we're on that motion, just so everyone's aware of what we're voting on. Any other discussion or debate on the recommendation to approve hosting the 2018 midterm meeting of the Francophone and Francophile Cities Network? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the city of Grand Prairie joining the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association, and further direct the mayor to appoint a member of council as a voting member of the association. Speaking to the motion, this is the first time, in my knowledge, that we've been part of this association, and as we all know, we truly are a region of multinational cultures and multilingual languages, and I think that it's an opportunity for us to show how valuable that is to our region and to our people. This appointment doesn't have to go on and on, but as a first-time member at the table, I think there'd be value of somebody being there from council for at least one term. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I'll clarify in terms of the mayor's recommendation. Subject to this motion passing, I would have a discussion with council, and then we would identify who that council member would be. But just to speak to the point raised by Counselor Resi, when council reviewed the committees at the end of last term, on the basis of their experience of that term, this wasn't one that we were on in the past. And so it is something new, and council, that's why it's here for council vote on whether we think that it's valuable use of a council member's time to attend. I would encourage council to support it. I think that the participation in the organization offers some benefits to the community and to the municipality in terms of being able to access additional knowledge and additional grants that this body may have access to that we might not otherwise have as good a pipeline or connection to. So I certainly support exploring it, and council appointments to external bodies are something that we do review on a regular basis, and at our organizational meeting every October is a chance for us, at minimum, to decide whether or not we want to do that. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. That is it with motions. I just had a couple other items if I?
I think you've got 9.4.3.
Oh, I apologize.
There's some people that have been waiting for that, actually, so they, oh, let's just, you know what, let's forget it.
I got some other things in here, too, I tell you. It's going to be, all right. So first, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1226, C being amendment to the animals and responsible pet ownership by law.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So as with during our other ones, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, seven to one. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1226C.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So on second reading, we are open for discussion and debate. I would look to council to see if there's anyone who has any discussion or debate they'd like to initiate. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, this has certainly been a controversial issue over time, and I did observe the city council meeting where it was last dealt with, and I appreciate some of the points that were brought up by councilors speaking for and in opposition to the motion. I had the opportunity to look more carefully at the guidelines that were proposed by administration at that time, and I see that the guidelines do require notification with neighbors. And I'm going to presume that notification also involves accepting objections from neighbors and making a decision based on those objections. So my first point is that if neighbors do agree in certain areas of the city that it would be okay for there to be a chicken coop nearby, then I don't see why we should ban the entire city from having that opportunity to discuss it. The second point I want to make is that I went to the Backyard Hens 101 course, because I wanted to know a lot more about what was involved in the actual keeping of hens. And many of the points that were brought up this evening by people in opposition can be countered by some of the things that I learned. And I think one of the most important ones has to do with the biosecurity, as they call it, which has to do with the management of waste and the management of the health of the hens themselves. And the people who may be taking care of hens in their backyards are extremely well-aware of the cross-contamination that can occur between their own hens and others being animals and people. So there's a lot of care and attention given to preventing that kind of cross-contamination. I would point out that one of our requirements in the procedure is that there be training and mentoring for people who wish to have urban hens in their backyards. The GP urban hen people appear to be very dedicated, very disciplined, and more than willing to source training and provide mentorship for those people that may want to do this. And so I think that the risks are minimal, especially in areas where the neighbors would agree to have a coop amongst their neighbors. And I would like to give the, I'd like to give this group the opportunity to go ahead and give it a try. And I guess the one other point I'll make is that I heard from one, if maybe two, I can't remember for sure, who went to this training with the purpose of learning what it would take and who decided that they could not keep hens because it would be more work than they're prepared or able to do. And so the training, I believe, is very, very effective in that regard.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess my questions may be more for administration. If we were not voting about a hen policy tonight, would we be having this bylaw? Does this bylaw need to be updated for other purposes, or is it specifically just for this?
Mr. Manuel. So there is some housekeeping amendments in the bylaw, particular to annexation specifically. Now, that being said, if the bylaw was struck down tonight, we can certainly come back with a housekeeping amendment at a future date.
Okay. And my other question is just around consent, and my apologies if it was somewhere in our package, as I thought I looked through, but I didn't see when it talks about neighbor consent. Are we talking about just adjacent neighbors, or is it a radius? And what does consent mean? I mean, the comment earlier was that they had a text message, so there was something that they had. Is that something that we're looking for specifically?
So what administration's proposed is actually what we call neighborhood notification, so it'd be the adjacent properties, so not directly left or right, but behind as well. And it's not necessarily consent. They have the ability to object, similar to a development permit. So they would put their objection in writing to enforcement services, and then we'd review the rationale as to why their objection was made, and see if it was one that would, could potentially be mitigated, or one that could be fatal to the application itself. But that's what we had proposed. And again, it's going to be administration-led in that process, not necessarily applicants. The applicants can certainly have a conversation with their neighbors to try to generate that support and offset any concerns that may be arisen, but ultimately, it's administration's call.
Thanks, Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mr. Manuel.
Counselor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak to the motion, and I'm going to conclude with a motion to amend it, actually. And when I first heard about urban hens, I was very strongly opposed to it. And then over the last year, I've read everything I can about how this is going in other cities. I've visited urban coops in other municipalities, and I went to Urban Hens 101, and all of my concerns have been taken care of. My mind, I know that property rights came up earlier, and that's what this is about to me. I'm of the fundamental belief that people should be able to do whatever they want on their property if it's not creating a safety hazard, or if it's not creating a significant nuisance to their neighbors. And all, in everything I've read, I haven't seen anything that convinces me that four hens is going to be a safety concern to anyone. So then it comes down to, is this a nuisance or not? And that's a very subjective term. What is a significant nuisance? What isn't? But it strikes me, a good rule of thumb of what we consider acceptable or not is, what do we already allow? We already allow cats and dogs, and in my mind, concerns were brought up, if we allow hens, will we allow goats or pigs or cows or anything like that? It's really clear to me that those have a lot more potential to be It's really clear to me that those have a lot more potential to be disturbing than cats or dogs. So I'm very comfortable saying no to those while still saying yes to hens. That's because I don't think that four hens is likely to be as disruptive as a single free roaming cat or a single large dog. And that's especially considering that here we are putting really stringent requirements on urban hen keepers. And we're gonna be, make sure that we get quality owners with these, with these animals. So for me, it doesn't make any sense that we wouldn't be talking about banning or at least putting a lot more regulations around cats and dogs if we're not allowed hens. So I'm, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this. At the same time, I am always prepared to say that I might be wrong about something. So I'm glad that we're doing this as a pilot program. I'm glad that we're not just saying, hey, it's free raining, this is what we do now. That being said, a pilot program is only as effective as the data you put into it. And I think one of the worst things that could happen was we run this for a year and then we say, great, we like what happened, we allow the city, we allow more permits to be taken, and then we start running into issues. I think that we should be running as many experiments in our community as we feel we safely can run without significant risk. And we've heard that we've got 13 people who have yards that work for this, who have taken the course and who also have neighbor consent. I think we should be enlisting all of them to help us figure out what are the impacts of this actually gonna be in our community. So for that reason, I'm gonna move that we amend the motion to read no more than 15 livestock exemption permits be issued.
I hate to do this to you again tonight, Councilor Bressi, but so tonight, right now, we're discussing debating second reading of the bylaw. The point that you're speaking to is actually a direction to management on how many they issue. And so I'm gonna have to interject there. And had you done that at the start? No. But no, so fair enough, but we are on, we are, we are on second reading of the bylaw. It sounds as though you're speaking in support of the bylaw with some specifics, an amendment that you'd propose later on to that second piece. Council direction to administration on how many to issue in the first year, which that motion hasn't been made yet.
Yes.
So I will not accept that amendment at this point because it's not an amendment to the bylaw. Is there any other discussion or debate with respect to the bylaws proposed? Seeing Counselor Thiessen.
Hey, thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'm gonna speak in support of this bylaw. Largely, I think I've already talked a lot of points. Dylan sort of talked to most of my extra points. I just wanna highlight the thorough process that the GP Urban Hens Group has put together and dedicated. They've been doing this now for a little over a year, almost a year and a half now, trying to get hens in the, in the city. They were very thoughtful in their process. They did their due diligence. Even the bylaw, as it's accepted, has pretty much accepted all of their guidelines on an A through F sort of line, A through I actually, where we took their suggestion and we said, yeah, that's really thoughtful, that's good. If we're gonna have this, we're gonna want that. I don't fear goats coming in. I honestly don't. I don't fear cows, and I don't fear pests. I was giving away, well, I was presenting at the Farm Family of the Year Award out in the county, and there was lots of discussion because it was in the newspaper about, about urban hens. And a lot of the farm folk out there that were talking wanted to talk about chickens in the city. And they said, yeah, you should do it. And I said, yeah, well, people say mice and that they attract this and that. And they said, have you ever seen a chicken tear apart a mouse? Because they do it all the time. Like mice don't survive. They get in their hen house and see you later, little mouse, you're done. So I thought that was good for anybody who may speak against and say, I don't want mice in my neighborhood. It is a small footprint. Even if we just approve at 10 and we have three people that are left out in the cold, there's always the opportunity to expand that later or tonight, as we've already discussed. But 10 for almost 70,000 people is a very, very small footprint. Not quite as small as 50 for 900,000 in Edmonton, but I think for service and land area, this is a very small pilot project. And if we have dedicated owners to owning coops and chickens in town, I think we'll see very quickly, like if seven of those coops fold within the next year, then maybe chickens aren't the right fit in Grand Prairie, but we'll never know that unless we actually give it a shot. This is an opportunity for neighbors to get to know neighbors a little bit. It's an opportunity for individuals to get out of their uncomfortable zone and actually talk about things that are bothering them instead of jumping on social media and becoming troll-like for how they approve or disapprove of certain things. So I like the face-to-face contact and I like the opportunity that this is gonna provide for neighbors to understand where each other are coming from, whether they like it or not, you know, at least, at least the opportunity for engagement is there. So seeing all that and everything else that's been said, I'm fully 100% in support of this bylaw. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. There's one thing that I did forget to mention, and that is to make sure that people understand that aside from any regulations and guide laws that we would put in place in our municipality, there are also provincial regulations and required registration that folks in Grand Prairie would, would have to adhere to. And I think it's a very well-regulated situation and that just sort of helps me believe that we're not at high risk in doing this. Thank you.
Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Plott.
Mayor Given, I'm just wondering, we had 10, 13 people that said they were interested before, there was, you know, a comment made about that. What if we have it at 10 and 17 people want it? Like what, if we say 10, is that the threshold we're starting with, I guess? There's a question for that for me. And also, how are we gonna place this? So if 10 go up and somebody just decides to put one in hypothetically, because this could be real negative on the group that's trying really hard, somebody goes in and puts one in, what's, what's our, what's our teeth gonna be at that point, I guess? What, to administration, what would our process be at that point?
Mr. Manuel, and just before you answer, I'll just remind council that the amount of licenses that would be issued is, you know, subject for debate, but we're talking about the bylaw right now. Mr. Manuel.
Certainly. So the process would be if a person did not have a livestock exemption permit but proceeded to have urban hens, typically it'd be dealt with on a complaint basis. Certainly, it's not something that we're gonna go yard to yard checking on. But if we became aware of a complaint and a person was unlicensed and due to cap restrictions, there was no ability for them to license, they'd essentially be advised that they would have to stop and ultimately rehome those, those urban hens. And if they failed to do so, we have a process similar to whether we have excess dogs and cats and whatnot, which are not permitted, that we basically, a core process, we proceed with if necessary. But initially, it would be education indicating, this would be the process to get lawful if that lawful process was capped already. Unfortunately, they'd just be advised, as they are today, that they can't have them and they're gonna have to relocate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Manuel. Any other discussion or debate with respect to the bylaw? I'll just say that I will be supporting the motion on the basis that I see cities as dynamic organisms that are subject to change and not fixed in time. I think we need to be able to experiment, as Counselor Bressi referenced. And I think some of the steps that will come later in terms of limiting the numbers gives us an opportunity to mitigate any substantial risk to the community while still assessing how this works. I have absolutely no problem deciding that I don't like how it works if the results were bad. And so I think that that's on the community to demonstrate that it can be done well and respectfully. And if it works out that that's not the case, the council, after some period of time, has full authority to rescind this ability and this exemption. So I'm, I'm supportive of testing the waters, seeing how it goes and assessing. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this process. People are very diligent and doing their homework, and I appreciate that very much. But I've had a number of people come to me in the last few months, once this has sort of hit the air again. And I'd be lying if I didn't tell you there are some who are in favor, but that's very few. I've had people that are kinda, you know, wishy-washy, but I'm not sure the percentage, but extremely high percentage of people have said to me, please don't vote for this. So with that, I will not be supporting this, this program. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Are you ready to move on to a vote, council? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Looking for one more, council. Thank you. That motion carries five to three. Can I have a motion to have third reading? Counselor Clayton, you just have to get your microphone.
That council have third reading of bylaw C dash one two two six C at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. That motion again is to have third and final reading here tonight. Must pass unanimously. If it doesn't, it would come back at our subsequent council meeting for those final readings. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, and so this matter will come back at our subsequent council meeting for the conclusion of the bylaws. I just would look to management for a bit of suggestions. Should we deal with the direction in terms of the number of permits available tonight? Or should we wait until the bylaw passes? Okay. Okay, so the advice that I'm getting from management is that we wait for the bylaw to pass and then direct management on how many exemptions would be available. So the, this business will be concluded at our next council meeting. And that's all there is to say on that topic this evening. So we'll move on to, or sorry, Counselor Clayton, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
There was actually, thank you, Mayor Given. At the March 6 meeting, we had a big, full gamut of delegations and just want to thank you the people that came out. Stars gave us an update as well as Grand Prairie District Victim Services Unit, the Grand Prairie Technical Search and Rescue, and Grand Prairie and Area Safe Communities. So it was a full slate of delegations, and thank you to them. There was also, as noted prior, downtown rehabilitation project update. And one item, sort of to let people watching and people that are interested to know, there was a motion passed to direct management to invite the Regional Director of Alberta Transportation to attend the future committee meeting to provide an update on Highway 40 and Highway 43X. We know, again, recently, there was another accident in Highway 40, and this continues to be a substantial and, and, you know, life-threatening priority for the region. And so I'm very happy to see that this committee encouraged management and look forward to the update from Alberta Transportation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. That'll take a side of nine point five, the Arts Development Committee meeting. Counselor Blackburn. I'll just ask you to get your microphone on there.
Thank you. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Arts Development Committee meeting held Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Blackburn, anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
Yes, I would. We, we dealt with two pots of money at this, at this meeting, and the first was major projects funding, and we had $3,000 available. We had three very good applications, and we were unable to weigh the merits of, of each of them and give them that the amounts that they had asked for. So we decided that in, in fairness, we would provide support to each of them in, in the amount of $1,000 each. And so they were the Grand Prairie Pipe Band Association towards their trip to Scotland in 2019 to participate in World Pipe Band Championships. The, the second one was the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie for their wearable art show in 2018. And the third was to the Real Shorts Festival for a project called Shoot for Real, which is a, a project where people who are interested in filmmaking would get the opportunity with the mentoring of professionals to create a short film during the time of the festival. The, the second part of our meeting was to do with festival funding. We had $70,000 available in that fund, and we didn't give it all away because there is a, a second round that groups can apply for in the fall. So I'm very happy, though, that we were able to provide funding to seven different organizations that included Music Festival, the Maple Festival, the Society of Irish Dance, the Alberta Cultural Days Events at the Center for Creative Arts, and HIV North for their powwow. Something very interesting, the East Coast Garden Party is interested in putting on some neighborhood parties, they're calling them Party in the Park. So there will be four neighborhoods that they hope to put a one afternoon event on in to try to encourage just some, some neighborly participation. And the final one was the Ukrainian Fatimo Festival. A lot of very good applications, a lot of exciting things going on in the, in the city, and we're very happy as a committee to, to be able to help fund those and make them happen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. I think that handles all of our committee business, and we had no items of correspondence tonight, and stand to be corrected. But in terms of delegation business, we had the presentations with respect to urban hens. I think that was dealt with on our agenda. We also had the presentation from Mrs. Rice with respect to the Downtown Association budget. I wonder if we could have a motion to receive that presentation for information. Counselor O'Toole, quick on the draw.
Mayor Given, I make a motion to accept Counselor Helen Rice's from the Downtown Association request.
It's tough to get used to, isn't it? Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we also had a presentation from Mr. Cho with respect to liquor stores. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna move that we refer this matter to the appropriate standing commit, committee not to be accompanied by a staff report. And that's a pretty specific motion I'm making. I think it is worth us talking about, is this an issue that our council has appetite to touch? It's definitely something that I've heard enough from the community, I think it's worth us at least discussing, do we want to have this conversation? I don't think we need to tie up staff resources to set up that initial conversation.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi, and thanks for the clarification on the intent of it going to committee. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, I actually won't be supporting the motion surprisingly enough. Last council, we talked this over and over thoroughly, and I think the previous council said it's a free market. I know a brand-new council, Counselor Bressi. And although I agree with Mr. Cho that we have way too many liquor stores, on my count it was 71, but you know, you walk into a couple liquor stores, you start seeing double after a while, right? So, so 48 is still quite a bit, but just for that, I just think we might find a similar discussion meets its same end, and I'm all open for a discussion, but I just don't think I'm gonna support it here tonight.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? I'm gonna say that I'm not gonna support the motion for similar reasons, Counselor Thiessen. Happy to be overruled by the majority of council, but I also think that the specific request that Mr. Cho brought with respect to differentiating between locally owned versus franchise versus corporate stores is problematic. And so there wasn't a basis, you know, either in terms of the overall number or the ownership that I could see myself wanting to have a further discussion on or spend further council time on, so I won't support the motion. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also won't be supporting the motion as much as I love data. I'm not sure what we would do with the data when we got with it, honestly, so that's why I wouldn't be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Plott. Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, Mayor Given, I won't be supporting neither. None of the suggestions that were brought up last time, such as location or hours of operation, were brought up in his conversation. It was about little guy versus big guy, and we really can't stop that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, I'm going to speak in opposition as well, and it's, it's simply a matter of the free market, and I appreciate that it's hard for some of the locals to compete against some of the advertising budgets and so on that the larger, that the larger companies may have. However, that's the challenge of the free market, is to overcome those challenges and to attract the market in their own favor. And I believe that, that it's going to be up to them to do that. up to them to do that.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Blackburn. I don't see, oh, I recognize Counselor Minhas.
Yeah, I will thank you, Mayor, Mayor Given, sorry about that. I don't think I'm gonna speak in the favor. What I would ask the administration is, can we look into it in the future? Whatever the liquor store we have, we can't change them in the future if we can have maybe three hundred meter distance and not close to the school. If, if the administration can look into the possibility, I don't think it related to the motion, but this, my feelings are, you know, that, like, the cities are doing this. And I know the small town, they don't build the liquor store close to schools, so if that can be looking into too.
Thanks, Counselor Minhas. I think for clarity, the motion that Counselor Bressi made was to refer the issue raised by Mr. Cho to committee, where the committee would decide if they wanted to give more direction to management to follow up on a particular aspect of the issue. If the motion doesn't pass here tonight, then it wouldn't be referred to committee. I think that's, and I think that's the basis that we're having discussion on. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, seven to one. And I'm just reading out some of the numbers because I was informed that our webcast may or may not be up, may not be up. Some people might not be able to see the score, so to speak, in terms of the votes. Okay, I think that that handles. Oh, sorry, yes, we still need a motion to receive for information then. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we receive the delegation presentation for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate from council? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And again, I think the presentation with respect to the urban hands, that item was dealt with specifically on our agenda, so I don't think we needed a motion to receive those for information. We had no notice of motion this evening, and council member reports, I think I only had one, Counselor O'Toole, with respect to the Combat sports commission.
Brawl's Deep. Well, it made the news last time, we'll try it again. So this weekend, on Friday, we have X FFC seventeen Brawl's Deep taking place in the, in Trek Center. We will also have as the commission, I attended the commission meeting, Jared Vellin. He's the Canadian representative, the top dog in Canada for command training. So in all the MMA events, the Professional Boxing Association throughout North America, they rate the command trainers as the very best, the elite. They're the only ones that they use. So down in the United States, they use a guy named John McCartney, and John McCartney and Jared Vell are the, the team for North America. So he will be coming to Grand Prairie here on Friday to do a presentation to our Combat Sports Commission, and he's just from Winnipeg. He's just a young guy, he's a past MMA fighter, and he knows the rules and he knows the game, so be a great thing. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Were there any other reports from our external boards or commissions to present? Seeing nobody else ringing in, I'll maybe call my own number since I'm player coach sitting in the seat. But I just wanted to present to council, AUMA will be hosting their leaders symposium in past, this week. In past years, this was called the Mayor's Caucus. AUMA created this opportunity because there was a feeling that getting together once a year to discuss policy issues and other perspectives was not enough, and wasn't timely enough to be able to respond to emergent issues. The session is set up. The first day, there are panels with the cabinet ministers. I think they have eight cabinet ministers planned in attendance, and, and then there are a number of working sessions with respect to change management for the amended municipal government act and the tools that are being launched by AUMA in the province, and a number of other timely issues. So I will be attending that. I think Counselor Clayton's attending as well, I don't know if any others, but they did change the name to clarify the intent that it wasn't just for mayors. Certainly is an opportunity for other council members to attend, and there will be some policy votes. Council provide a letter of endorsement with respect to Calgary's call for extended manufacturer responsibility for recycling. That's the kind of thing that will show up there, and so I'll be attending there and happy to represent the city and mid-sized cities at that meeting. I don't see anybody else ringing in for any other external boards or commissions, and so we'll start our council roundtable. I'll start with Counselor Thiessen.
Great. I was just writing down what I'm gonna talk about. So we did a lot in the last month. The previous council meeting seemed like we didn't do very much, but since then, it's been very, very busy. So I'm just gonna highlight a bunch of events and hopefully don't talk too long. On February fourteenth, I had the opportunity to give greetings on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie on Valentine's Day for the Passionate Heart Awards Luncheon, to which we honored our frontline service workers. It was an honor to be able to do that. This is now my third time actually being able to give greetings on behalf of the city, and several of my council peers were in attendance. I believe I sat at a table with Counselor O'Toole and Counselor Platt, and tending around the room, there was, I believe, Counselor Minhas. No, were you there? Yeah, you were there, and Counselor Bressi, and Counselor Blackburn was not there. I knew I had one of these, these gentlemen that are so handsome, that were there with me. It was awesome. Normally, they do an entertainment section, and so I was trying to speed along the process, but everybody wanted hugs, and I was more than willing to give out hugs. At one point, I said, hey, we gotta speed this along, we still got entertainment coming up, right? And they looked at me and they said that I was the entertainment, so I was happy to take part in that. People seemed to enjoy all my buoyant hugs. From there, that day, we, council minus the mayor, went off for a romantic meeting in the afternoon with Mr. James Kenny from the UCP party. I'm sure it was very romantic, but I'm sure there was some romance going on from one side or the other. But we asked him some good questions and some important questions that pertain to Grand Prairie, and it's just good that we can state our case to all the people who are running for those major political parties and leading them amongst our province. The next day, I went to the Oliver's Flag burying ceremony. I know that was the only counselor in attendance there. It was my honor to give greetings again at that point. This is a, a service ritual for military servicemen. It's like honoring our country and the commitment that, that our servicemen went to go to fight for war, for a war under our flag. And apparently, there's a service that needs to be done with your flag when you're getting rid of it. You don't just crumple it up and throw it in the garbage. They used to burn it, but now everything's nylon and polyester fabric, so it's very oily and gross smelling, so we decided to bury it, to which the city of Grand Prairie created a small lot, or plot, I guess, at the Grand Prairie Cemetery, and we had a good service there of about eighty people actually standing around and burying, believe it or not, a hundred and fifty-one flags on our hundred and fifty-first year. That was not intentional, it was just a random number that popped out, that we, we buried a hundred and fifty-one Canadian flags on Canada's hundred and fifty-first year in there. So, you know, sometimes synchronicity has, has its own effect. Also, on February twenty-first, I was, gave greetings with Counselor Eunice Friesen at the Youth Council brand launch, open mic, and overall, great night. We've got some real leaders coming forward from the Youth Council, and I think council is finally gonna get to see them in front of us again, saying, with a few demands, and not really demands, but I think they just want inputs and they want to be engaged more. And part of what Counselor Fries and I have been talking with Youth Council about is start engaging council. Like, we're not the only counselors here, so we do have a plan with that, and part of that brand launch was step one. And finally, I just want to put a shout out to the farm family of the year. I went out to the Evergreen Park, I was at Clarkson Hall to give, I guess, the city of Grand Prairie's present to the farm family of the year, which was a sleddy family who settled in Grand Prairie in the year nineteen fourteen, which ironically enough is the same year that the city of Grand Prairie Incorporated as well. So aproposly, I guess, or appropriately, we had given them our centennial book, as well as a relatively nice gift basket, but I wanted to say thanks for sticking it out on the farm. I know a lot of kids move into the city or to bigger city centers to do that, but to have five generations manning a farm out in the Peace Region, ensuring that, you know, agriculture is, is a fine industry that we can rely on out in this region is a good thing. So thank you very much to the sleddy family for over a hundred years of hard agricultural work, and thank you very much to the county for, for supporting our farm families. This is something they've been doing for three and a half decades at least in recognizing our farm families and for the contributions that they give to the greater region and world. I could talk about strategic planning, but I'm, I'm running out of air here, so I'm gonna pass it on to my friends. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, the first thing I want to mention is that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities put on a webinar in the middle of February to ask people what kinds of services we believe that, that FCM should be providing. And I wasn't able to provide any input to that because I don't know much about FCM at this point. However, it was also a good opportunity to learn about the organization, and, and I'm very pleased that, that they were willing to put that webinar on and have us participate and learn more about it. I attended the Growing the North Conference, and kudos to those people that organized it. The selection of speakers was very, very good. All of the speakers were very engaging, and, and I, I learned, I learned a lot about things that I had no idea even existed, so it was, it was great. Another thing that I'll point out was that I was able, on behalf of, of you and council, to bring greetings to the Women of Influence Awards Luncheon and to make a proclamation declaring the, the day. I also want to say that it was a very well-organized event, so kudos again to the, to the city and the committee that put that on, and also to our fellow counselor, Eunice Friesen, who was the keynote speaker and did a very good job. And that's about it for this trip.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Platt?
Yeah, it was, it was definitely a lot busier last month. I guess my highlight from it was probably the Grow the North Conference. I know Counselor Blackburn mentioned that, but shout out to the chamber for another successful event, well, well-attended, good guest speakers, lots of good conversation in the halls and the breakout sessions after that. And it was just nice to have a general sense from most business community that we are, have turned a corner. I know there's lots of, there's lots of stats and data out there that say that, but it's actually nice to hear from the business owners most that they are actually seeing an increase. The common thread, though, from business owners that I, that I did speak to at it was that we're gonna have another labor shortage coming, so hopefully we can have some conversations about what the city can possibly do to be involved with that or help, can help that. And it was also when the college announced that they, that they got their status. So it was an exciting, it was an exciting couple days, so, thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Platt. Counselor Minhas?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think they covered most of my stuff, but there is a couple things. Shay Anderson was here that, when we had a meeting with the council, and he spent time over, supposed to be one hour, but he spent a couple time with me, and he wanted to see our operation in the, in our shop and trucking and learning about how to do with the logging and what else, you know, hauling logs and stuff. So it was very interesting, and it seems like he was a very open guy and municipal affairs minister being, and had a good learning chat with him. And then another thing was Jason Kenny, he came to, he requested to come to our Six Temple Church. He became there and he was, came to say thank you to Sikh community who raised two hundred thousand dollars for trauma room, and also he wanted to discuss about it. So that was a good trip. There was about fifty people and show up in the middle of the week in our church, that was good. And now the third thing is our premier Asian nautally, she's coming to Grand Prairie on fif- fifteenth, Thursday evening, and paradise in. So if somebody interested to come and meet her, greet, it's seventy-five dollar ticket. I don't know, it's fundraising or whatever it is, but that's, they inform us, so that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Minhas. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to highlight a few things. I had the opportunity to be deputy mayor while Mayor Given was away, which in turn filled up my schedule quite nicely, so I brought greetings on behalf of mayor and council to Growing the North, which many other people referenced, and it was a, a great conference, good speakers. It was a busy few days, starting off with Taste of the Peace, where we had an opportunity to highlight growers and manufacturers of food fair and accessories to food from the region, and, and it was very well-attended, so, and then it led into two days of great speakers and, and other sort of meetings along the way. As referenced, I also attended the GPRC announcement regarding the university, regarding GPRC granting university degrees. It was a, a long overdue announcement that many, many people put many, many hours and discussions and trips to Edmonton and, and lobbying and, and recalculating opportunities and, and revamping discussion, and it was excellent news. So I'm very proud to have been part of that organization in my past and very happy for what the future looks like for GPRC. I attended the Aqua Terra Sharehold, Special Shareholder Meeting with many other counselors. Sort of a highlight during the last month was the Big Hearts for Big Kids event. That event continues to grow and raise money, much-needed money for the Odyssey, or sorry, for the Sunrise House Children's Shelter. This year, they raised two hundred and forty thousand dollars in one night, and it simply is the community coming out to support the need of, of an organization that is essential in our community, and every year that event grows. So special thanks to, to Neil and the volunteer organization, and congratulations to the Sunrise House for, for a well-executed evening and very successful results. I attended the Regional Recreation Committee meeting in Valley View with Mayor Given and, and Counselor Platt, and so therefore was unable to attend. The luncheon where Counselor Friesen was keynote speaker, so, but I'm happy to hear that fellow past Counselor Helen Rice was a recipient of an award that day, and having had the opportunity to have, have served a term with her, I can say that it was very well-deserved. And I'll just sort of say one last piece, that I attended a meeting with many other council, maybe all of council, regarding the Inclusion Grand Prairie Organization. They came and, and had a good discussion with us, told us some of the needs in Grand Prairie, and, and identified some issues, and, and discussed solutions, and, and so it was a very informative meeting, so I thank them for coming out. And I think I'll leave the rest to someone else. Thanks.
Counselor O'Toole?
Well, a lot of those things I've been to as well, so that's pretty, pretty, pretty busy this last month. I just want to talk a little bit. I went to a program that we've been, I've been part of, it's called the Community Action to End Poverty in Grand Prairie, and I've been attending meetings for about three years now, and we're finally getting all our bugs in a row and, and stuff like that, and we should be hearing from us as a group in the near future. Also, I attended a workshop put on by the county for effective lobbying of the government, and that course was taught by somebody that works for Grant McEwan. He was brought up from Grant McEwan College. And it was a full day of very informal, very informative information from a person that walked the walk and talked the talk, so he had some insight for all of the people. It was not just attended by the county or the city, there was other communities that sent personnel there as well, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I thought I could contribute something original, and then Counselors Clayton and O'Toole went, but I'll highlight two of those events. One thing I appreciated with inclusion in Alberta was about halfway through the meeting, they said, hey, we also want to thank you guys as a city for doing such a good job. And my first comment was, I'm so glad to hear that's your perception. My second question was, so what are we doing for you guys? And we're working, our staff are working to place some people with disabilities in a rotary employment partnership, and I was excited to hear that. I really think that when we're talking about a lot of the issues in our city, it's not just about the city of Grand Prairie putting more money into issues. More often than not, it's about us putting more leadership into them, so I was excited to hear about a place where we're providing that leadership. I also really appreciate the lobbying and the advocacy workshop that Counselor O'Toole and I went to, and something that really stuck out to me was just the constant encouragement that success is found by the people that actually do it, and they do it regularly. And it's something I hope that we have a more fulsome conversation about is not just what are our advocacy priorities gonna be as a council, but also what are we actually gonna do about it, and who are we gonna be designated to move that forward? I think we could potentially be losing on a big, on big I think we could potentially be losing on a big, on big opportunities because we're not doing that, but the other thing that stuck out to me was at that workshop, there were seven county councillors and six staff from the county, so this is obviously a place that they've got a big, big, big interest in and as we're looking for ways to work together as a region, that's an obvious, obvious opportunity to me, so I hope that we can move on that with our regional neighbors.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Well, I'll just highlight a few things that haven't already been mentioned. This past Saturday, I attended at the Grand Prairie Legion as they unveiled their new donor wall for their capital campaign. The Legion has launched approximately a $1.5 million capital campaign to renovate their building to make their facility wheelchair accessible, the bathrooms in the facility have not been renovated in quite some time and are not wheelchair accessible. They're also gonna fully renovate all the food and beverage service areas and provide some additional accessibility down to their basement, so they wanted a way to recognize their donors who they were actively encouraging that day, but congratulations to Legion for the kickoff of that campaign and I hope the community will come out and support them over the course of that capital campaign. I also welcomed a group of YMCA pre-employment students here to City Hall, they were with their, with their workers and had an opportunity to discuss some of the lessons that I've learned from the various jobs that I've held in my life, all the way from selling shoes to selling computers and how those continue to be lessons that I can use here in my role as mayor. And so just shared some of those with the kids and was happy to have them here at City Hall. I also attended the Community Advisory Board on Housing and Homelessness Planning Session where the committee looked at the federal requirements to have such an entity as well as the roles and responsibilities that the CAB, as it's known, shares with the CBO, the community-based organization, which is the city of Grand Prairie. And so I think that that's something that council will have to inform ourselves about because, and ensure that we're holding up our end of the bargain and ensuring that CAB can do the work that it's intended to do. Finally, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Roundtable, it's an annual event that the Chamber of Commerce hosts where the two MLAs and the MP are in attendance, along with representatives from the three school boards, the oil and gas industry, the three forestry major employers in town, Farm Credit Canada, the Tourism Association, healthcare, college and municipalities, I think I caught just about everybody. And but a great opportunity to get a bit of a sense of what's going on around the community. I would say that a number of people pointed to labor shortages already, as councillor Platt mentioned, so it's interesting to hear that being mentioned. Shortage of skilled trades, truck drivers was something that was coming up as a concern again already. And I shared with them that from our perspective, development and housing has been relatively slow is my understanding from industry and so I'm wondering if there's a bit of a misalignment if we have all these businesses that are looking for employees and are gonna start to try to recruit employees. If we don't have the housing for them, I think we could be in a difficult situation. But nonetheless, I certainly appreciate the Chamber of Commerce hosting that opportunity. And it was also interesting to see the number of things that are gonna be happening in 2020, when you start to think about the hospital will likely be actively open in 2020. The replacement of the Grand Prairie Compost High School is gonna be open in 2020 and you just went down the list and 2019, 2020, there's gonna be a lot of stuff happening in Grand Prairie, a lot of progress for our community and that was exciting to see. Finally, before we conclude our meeting, I'll say Go Storm Go one last time. The Storm are in for game five, decider to see if they go on to the second round. Mayor Rod Frank from Strathcona County is a great guy, but his team needs to go down in flames as our Grand Prairie Storm win and bring our Grand Prairie into the second round of the AJHL playoffs and so I wish our team the best and I hope the community will get out and support them and make Revolution Place just rock on Wednesday night. Have a great evening everyone.